Thanks on Tuesday, July 16, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHusis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terri Penny?
Here.
Commissioner Seabrook is absent and excused. Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to remind to everyone that the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissions to study issues, to gather and to analyze information to clarify questions. No votes are conducted during the work session. No public comments will be allowed tonight on the budget, however, will be allowed during the two public hearings that are scheduled for Wednesday, September 4, 2019, and Tuesday, September 17, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Tonight, we only have one item on the agenda, which is the general fund budget and enterprise funds discussion. I'd like to recommend that we use the same procedure as we did last year, if you'll remember that. First, we had the PowerPoint presentation given by Ron Herrick, and then will be questions and answers and comments. Then we have the Budget Advisory Committee to give us their recommendation. Then we're going to have a discussion on general fund and enterprise fund. On August 12, we'll have the second budget workshop, and then we'll be discussing the CIP, the salaries, penny for Pinellas, the CRA, and any follow-ups that we have from this meeting tonight. Everybody agree with that? Okay. So, Mr. LaCourts, Mr. Herrick, you ready for the presentation?
Good evening. Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herrick, Finance Director, and this is the first meeting of the BURB budget workshop for fiscal year 2020. And I've got a few slides. I'll try to make it quick and go through them so it's not too long. The budget process has been going on for a little over four months right now, the process to date. You know, in March, we sent out to the departments who entered their budget requests. In April, Finance compiled the budget document and made the revenue projections. May 16, 23rd, and 30th, the Budget Advisory Committee met with all departments and went through their budgets. July 2nd, the proposed budget was submitted to the Board, and July 16th, tonight, the first budget workshop on the 2020 budget. And if I may, I just wanted to make a little shout-out to the Budget Advisory Committee. You know, they went through a whole bunch of new members on it. We had the previous Board, I didn't know, you know, how they would be replaced and stuff, but, you know, totally new members, and all with varying financial backgrounds. They spent the whole month of May going over the budget. They went through every department's budget. They met with every department head, made expenditure cuts, asked a lot of good questions, and overall, I was very impressed with them. And I know Chairman Banther led them and guided them through the process, and Claire McCoy is here, he was one of the Budget Advisory Committee members, but I think they did a great job and stuff, you know, but I just wanted to have that little shout-out for them What you got, you got two budget books, and you probably, maybe you're used to them. One's this big three-ring binder here, which, you know, has all the detail, basically four reports, the revenue, the expenditures, justifications, and personnel schedules. I just mentioned that if you're looking for something, there's a good table of contents that narrows down where everything is. And at the bottom, I just mentioned there that you can find the budget books on the city website under Finance, under the Budget. Getting into the executive summary, which was this book here, you can find a lot of these pages in the table of contents, but I just wanted to highlight the budget message, which was one I just created in the last month. And what it does is try to highlight, it's a new report in there, and I just tried to highlight in those 10 pages, some of the stuff that's in the budget book with the different funds and the different, explain the variances in the funds. Another part of the executive summary is the CIP with the page numbers there, and I just wanted to highlight, if you're looking for all the CIP projects, if you, like, the first highlighted one, pages 98 through 100, those three pages have all the CIP projects for the five years right there, if you're looking to see everything. A lot of the other reports down the line are the separate funds that make up the CIP that are back there, and then on the bottom is the capital outlay for smaller equipment on pages 115 to 116. And then getting into the budget document, as you can see, the total city budget is $63 million. It's a $6 million increase over the 2019 budget, or 10.4%. Just tried to show the five largest funds, which are the General Fund, Water and Sewer Sanitation, Stormwater, and Penny. They make up almost $58 million, or 90% of the total city budget. Trying to break down, General Fund is 5.2, they had a 5.24% increase, and over here, trying to explain briefly what it is, it's salary benefits and repairs and maintenance. Water and Sewer, 12.3% increase, a lot of capital projects, salaries, and electric. Sanitation Fund, 6.58% between capital and salaries. Stormwater Fund, 136%, that's mostly the big Penn Street capital project, 2.4 million, which is charged to the Stormwater Fund. And then the Penny Fund, about 5.76% increase, it's capital projects. The budget assumptions in the budget, all funds are balanced, the general fund balanced without using unassigned fund balance, no new positions in the budget. Salary increases, we funded the general employees at 3%. Police and Fire Union employees per the contract. Health, Dental, and Life, we've estimated 10%. We don't have the final numbers, we might not get those until August. Workers' comp, we estimated 10%. Property insurance, 10%. Retirement accounts for police and fire defined benefit, we did them per the actuary required, per the actuary, the annual required contribution. And general employees defined contribution plan is at the 8.7%, which hasn't changed in a number of years. Some major revenue items, the millage rate is unchanged in the budget, is at 5.42. The property tax taxable values increased 6.44% as provided by the property appraiser. CRA property tax taxable values increased 1.29%. Some other major taxes, like penny tax, half-cent sales tax, revenue sharing, I've estimated between 2.5 and 5% depending on the tax. Water and Sewer reclaim rate increases at 2.75%, that's the approved rate increases. Sanitation rate is per the contract at 1.78%, it's based on the CPI. Stormwater increases at the 50 cents, which brings it to $8.15 per equivalent stormwater unit. And like I say, these rate increases are approved by resolution or contract. Other notable newer operating expenditure increases, we've got the health insurance plan consultant, we put some money in for that, $100,000. CRA plan updates, $75,000. Electric cost increase at the water plant, $101,000. Electric for streetlights, $52,000. City Hall generator lease, $75,000. Some fleet commercial repairs increase, $86,000. IT maintenance costs, about $71,000, and those right there of the increases are $561,000. Getting into the general fund, the general fund budget is $26 million. It's a $1.3 million increase, or 5.24%. No unassigned fund balances being used to balance the general fund. Trying to break down the expenditures by category, and just trying to show that Personnel Services increased $829,000, that's the largest increase. Operating was $408,000 over the previous year. And down below, just trying to graph it and show Personnel Services is 73% of the general fund budget, operating is 23%, and then down here, we graph it with 73, 23, and 1.6 capital. Major expenditure increases in the general fund is Personnel Services, about $829,000. Operating Services, the Health Insurance Consultant, it's total $100,000, but we're dividing it between $100,000, I mean, I'm sorry, $70,000 general fund, the other $30,000 is in the Water and Sewer Fund. City Hall Generator, total $75,000, but we've got $60,000, where we have a portion to the general fund, $15,000 we'll see coming out of the Water and Sewer Fund. Property Insurance, general fund portion is $38,000. Repairs and maintenance for IT, a lot of it is something new this year, the Microsoft MDM 365 is $71,000. Electric for streetlights, we've had some LED maintenance, and we have 70 new streetlights on Highway 19, and we also, there's been a 2.5% increase in electric costs that Duke has provided us. Fleet commercial repairs, mostly for police, fire, and streets, we've had to increase that $77,000 for total operating increase in the general fund of $369,000. And then the, I'm sorry, the SAFER grant, the four paramedics we started about two years ago, there's an increase. We've gone from the first two years, where the city had to pay 25%, the 75% was funded by the federal government. Now, the third year, the city has to pay 65%, and the other 35% is from the federal government. Then next year, in 2021, and beyond, the city's liable for the whole 100% of the four paramedics. So that was an increase of $173,000 in 2020. So that's roughly almost $1.4 million of some expenditure increases. Trying to show the revenues for the general fund, and of course, the largest increase is $621,000 in taxes. And down below, just to show, it's 54% of the general fund, and then just trying to graph it out, 54% taxes, permits, 8.9. Enter Government, 11.6. Charges, 11.9. Fines and forfeitures, interest, miscellaneous, and transfers, and restricted reserve. And taxes is not only property taxes, but it's utility taxes, communication service taxes, and the local business taxes. Some of the, trying to break down the general fund revenue increases, of course, the taxes, property taxes highlighted there, $546,000. Utility taxes, mostly electric, $78,000. Permits and fees, franchise fees on electric, $138,000. Some intergovernmental from the state, the revenue sharing, $42,000. Half-cent sales tax, $45,000. We got the art celebration grant again this year, $15,000. Library co-op funding, it's increased about almost $250,000, so we've had an increase of $27,000. Streetlight funding, since we have the extra 70 streetlights, the state pays us more money. So before, they paid us on 166 lights, so now we have 236 lights. So our funding went up to about $61,000, so it's almost an additional $20,000 the state pays us for maintaining those lights. Counties charges for services, we're about $20,000 more for fire services from the county, EMS, about $45,000 from the county, and then transfers increased $197,000 for almost $1.2 million in the revenue increases. Just trying to break down the taxable value changes to try to show that. The taxable values for the total city is at $1.9 billion. It's an increase of $116 million, or that's 6.44%. CRA is $89 million, it's an increase of $1.1 million, or that 1.29%. And just as a reference, the CRA base year is 2001, the CRA goes for 30 years, so the revenue that goes into the CRA is the money over this minimum base amount, that value minus that value times the millage rate is how much goes into the CRA each year from the city, and then we bill the county for their portion. Trying to break down the revenue for the property taxes, we've got this general fund portion, $9.7 million, increase of $546,000. CRA, $247,000, an increase of $5,989. And if you want more history on the property taxes, page 50 of the executive summary has like 15-year detail there. And I'd like to show this graph every year, it just shows everything that makes up the property taxes. It's got the millage rate here from 5.45, and we've sort of hovered at that until 2017, we reduced it to 5.42, and we're still at the 5.42. The taxable values, you know, we were going up in 2008, we got up to 1.9, over 1.9 billion, and then we took this big dip down here, do the economy down in 2013, to 1.3 billion, and now we're back up to 1.9 billion, almost up to where we were before. When you take millage rate times taxable values, you get the revenues coming in. So the revenues, where we were in 2007, we were at 8.1 million, the revenue's going to the general fund. We went down to 6.7 million, and now we're back up to 9.7 million in 2020. Trying to take this slide from the previous slide and try to highlight it a little bit more, but just trying to show where we went from the, and the taxable values from the 1.9 million, we went down 33% to that one, almost one, a little under 1.3 billion. We're back, we're back almost to where we were back in 2008. We had a 33% decrease, now we've had a 32% increase. Taking one of those slides from the previous slide on the revenues, like, say, back in 2007, we were at 8.1 million, we went down to 6.7. Now we're back up to 9.7 million, and then I had a thought, let me try to figure out, you know, what's been the increase over those years. So from 2007 to 2020, we went up 1.6 million from 2007 to 9.7 in 2020. So we increased 1.6 million, you know, if you average it out, it's $125,000 a year, or 1.52% a year. Always something what we're asked is, you know, the full-service cities, population greater than 20,000. And it's the five cities, it's Tarpon, Pinellas Park, Largo, Clearwater, St. Pete. And we're trying to show the tax rate in 2019, the blue bar, and then the red bars are 2014. And as you can see, Tarpon went down a little bit to the 5.42. Pinellas Park went down a little bit since 2014. Largo went up. Clearwater went up. St. Pete went down just a little bit. So of these five, the largest over 20,000, Tarpon is the lowest at 5.42. And then I was curious, I go, well, you know, of the cities, I go, how many had increases over the last from 2014 and 19? So 50% of Pinellas cities increased their millage rate since 2014, 25% were unchanged, and 25% of the cities reduced their millage rate, including Tarpon Springs. This is the same graph we just looked at with the full-service cities down here, but I was asked to put in some other cities, Seminole, Safety Harbor, Oldsmar, Danedin, and the Unincorporated. And these are cities, well, these ones here with no police department, but Seminole's at 2.47. Safety Harbor went up a little bit, 3.73 to 3.95. Oldsmar's held the same from 2014 to 19. Danedin's gone up from 3.73 to 4.13, and the Unincorporated has remained at 4.96. And then, like I say, down below is the same ones from the previous graph. And then I try to do, like to do some projections going out, and I did the revenues and expenditures for the last, since, from 2010 to 18, you know, we averaged about a 3.26% increase in expenditures. You know, I projected those out, and as you can see, we're pretty close, you know, revenues and expenditures going over these from 2010 to 23. Even in this part, we had expenditures over revenues, and so it's pretty close the whole way out there. And this was in, this projection was based on balancing the budget through 2023. This is the same graph you just looked at, but I thought, I'm just having fun with graphs, I know, but I added in the millage rate here. So here's the same revenues and expenditures, and here's the 5.42, to say I based the revenue projections on the 5.42 to balance the funds through 2023. I use 5% as a taxable value increase as an average. Sometimes I'm a little, maybe that's a little high, but we have been a little bit higher the last five, six years. So just trying to show that graph. And then I got one more. Same graph, revenues and expenditures with the millage rate I just showed you, but then I put in the unassigned fund balance. So with keeping the 5.42 millage rate and the projecting the revenues, I've been able to, with projecting through 2023, maintain the unassigned fund balance at 8.8 million. Whoops, sorry. Now the Water and Sewer Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund budget is $20,159,000, it's a $2.2 million increase, or 12.3%, and it's mostly capital. Expenditures by category, like I just said, it's mostly the capital increase of 1.4 million from 2019 to 20. And down below, just trying to show the same sort of graph, a capital outlay is 32% of the Water and Sewer budget, just trying to show, and personnel's 28%, operating 22%, capital 32%, debt 10%. Major increases in the Water and Sewer Fund, personnel, $286,000. Operating, $268,000. Here's the health insurance, the $30,000 for them breaking, you know, split between general fund. City Hall Generator, $15,000, split with the general fund. The property insurance portion for the Water and Sewer Fund, $27,000. Electric at the water plant, we need an increase of $101,000. Permit engineering, mostly for the sewer plant, $40,000, and some additional water, sewer repairs, maintenance at the water plant, $54,000 for $268,000. And the main capital increase is the sewer, Seabreeze drives sewer construction, a 1.4 million. So that 1.9, almost 2 million, is the big increase in, for the Water and Sewer Fund. Water and Sewer revenues, $9.3 million projected, 6.2 for sewer, $395,000 for reclaimed, based on the 2.75% rate increase that's been approved through 2028. These revenues are 79% of the budget. Trying to show the revenues by source in the Water and Sewer Fund, we got 16.7 million of revenues, or 83% of the budget. You will see a decrease here, maybe I'm being a little conservative, but we're seeing a slowdown in use of the water this year. I think we're down about 4%, so I might be a little conservative, but I just wanted to be on the safe side, so I budget a little less for water. If it comes in higher, you know, that would be, that'd be good. Sanitation Fund, approved budget, $5.4 million, a $334,000 increase, 6.58%. The main revenues are sanitation fees, $3.9 million, recycling, $599,000, yard waste, $330,000. The rate increase is 1.78%, that's based on the contract with the waste management. Those revenues are 90% of the budget. Rate, like I say, rate increase per the contract using the CPI. 2020 is the fourth year of the five-year contract with waste management, and there's a city administrative fee of 20%. The main expenses of the sanitation fund are the contractor expenses. We've got budgeted solid waste, $3.3 million, recycling, $488,000, yard waste, $208,000, for a total of $4 million. Getting into the stormwater budget, it's $3.5 million, a little bit higher because of the Penn Street project, over, you know, $2 million over that, 130%. The stormwater revenues are budgeted at $1.6 million, the equivalent stormwater rate will be 8.15, it's up 50 cents per the rate plan that was approved, the rates are through 2025. The major increase is the capital, almost 2 million, that's due to the Penn Street, Penn Gross Avenue stormwater project, almost 3.2 million. The Penn Gross project is split between the stormwater fund, $2.4 million, penny fund, $300,000. Water and Sewer Fund, $423,000, for the total of $3.3 million, $159,945. But we're also getting a SWIFTMUD grant approved in the amount of $1,368,000 for this project. I thought I'd, since we're going in enterprise funds, I'd show the golf course fund, just briefly here. The budget is $1,395,000, it's a decrease of $26,000 from the previous year, mostly because we eliminated the administrative allocation to the general fund, was at 62,000. Mostly because the golf course fund is sort of in the negatives, and we just thought it'd be good to just get it out of, we've been gradually going down with the administrative allocation. One year years ago, we're $275,000, then we were down to $130,000, and we just thought we, maybe we just need to eliminate it, and the auditors agreed with that, and they said, Ron, why don't you just eliminate that transfer? The golf course revenues are the fees for playing golf, almost 1.4 million, and the offsetting expenditures, personnel, $492,000, operating, $899,000, a little bit of capital, and the $1,395,000 of expenses. Little bit about the Marina Fund, budget of $207,000, $5,886 increase, 5.78%. Marina fees, $107,000, and then the expenses are broken down, the operating, $63,000, I'm sorry, personnel, $63,000, operating, $44,000 for the $107,720. And last but not least, just going forward, on July 23, at the meeting will be the authorization for the city manager to sign the DR420 forms. They set what would be the maximum millage rate for the city, it goes, once we sign that, it goes to the state. Second budget workshop, somewhere between August 12 and 16, I don't know if the date's been determined yet.
August 12. August 12.
Okay, it's August 12, correct, scratch out the 16 there. August 19, trim notices mailed by county, and that will have that millage rate that you determine on the 23rd. September 4, first public hearing on tentative millage and budget. September 17, second and final hearing on the budget and millage. October 1, first day of the 2020 fiscal year. And that's what I got, I'm open for questions.
Well, Ron, I want to thank you, thank Mr. LaCourts, all the staff, and all the members of the Budget Advisory Committee. We have a very good balanced budget, without using any emergency funds, and keeping the same millage as we have, 5.42. Also maintain to have a full, a full-service city, that is very important to the people of Tarpon Springs. I want to thank you for all the work that you did. Any commissioning comments on the presentation? Vice Mayor Terri Penny?
Thank you. I just want to echo some of your initial comments, Mayor, and thank staff and Finance Director and City Manager for all your hard work throughout the budget season. It's obviously not easy to budget or to balance a $63 million budget, so thank you for all your efforts on that. I do have a couple highlights or questions throughout the presentation, if now's the time, Mayor, to get into the general fund.
Well, if it's related to the general fund, we'll discuss it then, if you like. If it is something to do with the enterprise funds, we can talk about that then.
So we're going to talk about the general fund, not now?
No, after we're finished, just in a few minutes. I'm going to ask the other Budget Advisory to give us their recommendation, and then we'll come back.
All right, sounds good.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to reiterate the same from the Mayor and Vice Mayor. I know all of our department heads work really hard to put these budgets together. Ron, you put a lot of work with your team and City Manager. I've bothered you enough, I think, probably for the next couple of years, I would imagine, with questions. So, as you all know, I'm very passionate about this, and it's important to the taxpayers and residents, and thank you all again for answering the questions that we have and dealing with some of the questions that you might not be used to getting, so I appreciate you being patient with us, so, thanks.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you so much, Ron. Again, I really appreciate the presentation, and how hard you worked getting this all set up for us, and to the rest of the department heads, same goes to you guys, you guys do a fantastic job, thank you. Then, of course, the Budget Advisory Committee, thank you guys for getting this all hammered out, ready to go. Excited to discuss tonight.
Okay. Mr. LaCourts, you have any comments?
Not at this point.
You're happy, man, huh?
I wouldn't go that far, but everything's good so far.
Now, we'd like to invite the Chairman of the Budget Advisory Committee, Mr. David Panter, to the Banther, to the podium, to give the recommendation of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Thank you, it, it feels good to be on this side of the dais for once. We have, we have a great committee, we have, we have, we have Cassie Hall here with us today, or Cass, which one, Cassie? Cassie, and then Claire McCoy, and it's, it's just a really great group of people. And as Ron said, we, though, though we got to meet with all the department heads, we had about six, six or seven meetings since the beginning of May, and gone through the, the entire budget. We have so far one general, you know, you know, recommendation, and then two from, from, from Commissioner Carr's items. So, so the first one is to leave the millage rate as is. If you review Ron's, Ron's, Ron's data, you know, you know, as he presented, we think with the rising expenditures and costs, and the, the, you know, uncertainty in future markets, that it's best to not, 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 not lower the millage rate, you know, at this time. And, you know, at least from, 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 from my perspective, that was mostly from his slide where he projected all the expenditures. And I think the rest of the committee felt, felt the same. And also after reviewing where, where, where we stand with, 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 with other communities, and especially when you look at us compared to, you know, to, you know, to, 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 to cities that are, that are full service. Then two of the items from, 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 from Commissioner Carr's list, the first one was the internal auditor, and we do support keeping it as is with the external firm, and that's purely from a financial standpoint, that we're recommending that. I know there's some other politics involved there, but from our standpoint, we think financially, that, 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 that makes the best sense right now, is to stay with that, so that's, that's the one resolution that we passed. And then another one from, 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 from Commissioner Carr's list was the salaries of commissioners. I know from personal experience that that's, that's, that's a very controversial topic, but we felt with the increase in health insurance cost, and with surrounding communities, that commissioners' rate should, should go from 8,000 to 10,000, and mayor from 13,000 to 14,000. So I know you all have other factors to consider in, in choosing that, but if you do choose to go that way, you know, that, that you have the support of an independent board for that. But overall, that's what we have right now as far as recommendations for you. I appreciate Commissioner Carr for his list of items he gave us that filled up two meetings, and so I hope that you got some of the responses that, 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 that you were looking for, and I'm open to any questions.
Mr. Banther. I personally want to thank you, and congratulate you. You served six years as the commission and the vice mayor. You didn't stop there, you continued to serve the city on the Budget Advisory Committee as the chairman, also on the charter review committee, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I also like to thank all the members of the Budget Advisory Committee for interviewing each department head and getting all the information that's necessary, and analyzing the budget, and reviewing each line item, which I, I know how, how difficult it is, how much work is involved, because before we had the Budget Advisory Committee, we used to do that here. So we used to spend hours and hours trying to save a couple pencils, and really, many times we were not even successful doing that, so I really appreciate the work that you're doing. In regards to your recommendations, the, I will start with the number two, the internal auditor, and I agree with you 100 percent that financially it makes more sense to do that. Also, an auditor, nowadays, he has to have many expertise, so by having a firm that, from the, you know, from, from the outside, they have different personnel, different people with a different expertise, they can come here, but if we have a person hired here, he's not going to have all this knowledge, all the skills that he needs to have, so I agree with you, it's going to be, I think it's going to be the best choice, in my opinion. In regards to the, the millage, that's, I'm going to have that a discussion here.
I'm sure you do, Mayor.
You probably already know that I'm always in favor of you reducing property tax, any way we can. As far as the, the salary, and I, I mean, I can see the, I can see your recommendation with that, but gain from 13 to 14,000 dollars, it may really make no difference to me, I really don't care. And I know that everybody here is not, even when you serve here, we're not here for the salary, we're here to serve. I really don't care about the salary. So I want to thank you. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Donovan is donating his salary to, to the, to the recreation at different, different teams, so we're here for, we're here to serve. And again, I want to thank you.
Absolutely.
And I will start with Vice Mayor Terrapin, if you have any comment.
I'd just say, you know, thank you for your service on the Budget Advisory Committee, and going by, like the mayor said, line by line, and making our job a lot easier, and it seems like with the current board, there's a lot of expertise as it relates to finance and budgeting, so I trust that you all did a fantastic job, and we appreciate you doing that. I don't really have any questions or comments about your recommendations, other, other than just to say, throughout your budget process and the original budget that was presented to you, did you see many changes as it relates to, you know, the actual budgeting and the balancing of this budget? Was a, was a budget presented to you that, you know, had a lot, a lot of things that needed to be trimmed, or how did that go for you?
It was pretty holistic, I mean, it seemed like it was similar to the, to the, to the, to the previous year budget, just obviously with, 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 with increased expenditures. There, there wasn't a whole lot that we had to trim back per se, there was, again, like you said, because of the wealth of knowledge on this committee, we did have, we did have some small things, not so much trimming, but moving some things around, if you will. And so there was a little bit of that, mostly just what I, what I, what I have brought forward, and again, very, very similar to last year.
Commissioner Carr.
Chairman Banther, thank you for your presentation, short and sweet, always appreciated. Thank you also to Mr. McCoy and Mrs. Hall for your service on the board as well. It's great having a fresh board on the Budget Advisory Board to take a different look at this as well. Ron and staff, thank you for working with the Budget Advisory Board. I just want to go over a couple of the items that I asked the board to look at, and Mr. Banther, if you could maybe touch base on one, if you have the information, if not, Mr. Herring, I'm sure could cover it as well. Some of the things I asked them were to evaluate the increase in tax revenue over the past five years, we've seen a, a large amount of increase, but very little millage rate decrease. Evaluate the other, evaluate the millage rates, Tarpon Springs compared to the other Pinellas counties, cities, administrative charges from enterprise funds that are paid to the general funds, and I think we'll have some more conversations about this later. But that's one I would like you to, if you have a little more information, do you recall on the conversation that you all had about that at all?
About the charges or the millage rate?
About the charges, I'm sorry, the administrative charges from like the stormwater and the water fund.
There, there, there wasn't a whole lot on that, because with this committee being new, obviously, a deep, there's, there's a deep wealth of finance knowledge, but this was more so in educational for them, I think, to get them up to speed on, 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 on what the enterprise funds are, what, what's, what's inside of them, and like how they work together. So we didn't have anything specific recommendations or changes, just general support, and what, what was presented, what was acceptable.
Okay. And there's a handful of other items, I'm not going to read them off, but as a reminder to, to, if it's any residents are watching this, that obviously, the city's only part of the property taxes, you have the PSTA, you have the school board, you have the county, EMS, and a couple other items as well, so we only make up a portion, or the city only makes up a portion of what actually the taxpayers pay on their property taxes each year, so. Thanks again for your work and dedication to the city.
Thank you.
Commission Donovan.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman Banther. Again, I appreciate the recommendations and the extra meetings you guys put in to really get this prepared. In terms of leaving the millage rate alone, again, I'm glad you guys look at it from strictly a financial perspective, I understand that. I'm willing to discuss lowering it, always, but that seems like a fine recommendation to me. Again, keeping the internal auditor external, I'm also in favor of. The increase to commissioner's salary, I disagree with, I made a campaign promise to never support that, and to echo what the mayor said, it's not about the money, so I will not be in support of increasing our salaries. But other than that, thank you again for the presentation, you guys did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, do you want to comment? Casey, do you want to say something? Okay, again, I want to thank both of you, and please say thank you to the others as well, David, I appreciate it. Now we go into the general fund. Now, we're going to have a discussion there, I have a bunch of notes that I, I'd like to share with everyone, and also questions to Mr. Licures and the staff. Start with the health insurance, which is the number one benefit for the employees. We budget a 10 percent increase, do we have any feeling what it's not going to cost us, and when we're going to find out?
My understanding is probably going to be closer, if I'm correct, Jane, to the beginning of August, somewhere around there. If you remember, usually this first budget meeting is usually towards the end of July and stuff, so we're a little closer, but I think last year, we didn't quite have it yet.
It's usually been about mid-August, we get that.
Mid-August, so we probably won't have it on a second workshop then.
Might be, if you're doing August 12th, we just have to see and find out from them.
We should be able to have it there. Yeah. Also, what's the latest on the, on the medical clinic? Any new information on that, Mr. Licures?
Not yet, again, we're there, some of that may be dependent on Osmar, and what happens with Osmar, they're in the process now of their health evaluation, so that's a factor that we have to wait to see what happens with them, and then we'll see if that affects us with the health clinic. So again, hopefully, and I think that one will be resolved by the 12th, so hopefully we'll have both of those, we'll have both of those, a better number on the 12th.
I hope we have a favorable answer, that's a very good benefit for the employees. Next is the marketing, which is very important to our local economy. Last year, Mr. Licures, we have, we've done marketing in-house, and our city employees did an excellent job providing that. What is your plan this year?
It's pretty much the same, I think we've got a team together, you've already seen what they've done so far, so I think we accomplished, if you remember, as we were talking the last budget, it was between hiring an individual, or having an in-house team, the advantage of having an in-house team is you could use the money that you would have budgeted for the marketing person, to actually put in the marketing, and I think if you've seen from that team working together, we've got a great plan going on, so hopefully, we can continue that for the, for the next year.
Yeah, I, I don't like to put on the spot, I know Ms. Wood is over here, she is the person responsible for doing that. I just wonder if she has any ideas that she wants to share with us, what you're going to provide, additions that you already have.
I don't know, do you and Karen want to come up, and is there anything new you two want to bring to us, or, or let them know what they're going to be seeing in the immediate future that's going to be going into, that'll be going into next year?
Karen Levens, Economic Development Manager. As you recall, last year, 30,000 was appropriated in the budget to do a marketing campaign, so next Tuesday at the board meeting, we're going to be unveiling the tourism video that we've produced, then we're going to have a public reception and opening on the 25th of that week for the video, and then the photo contest, and we'll be awarding the contest entries for the, the top categories in the photo contest. We've done seven advertorials, we have the two billboards, one at I-4 and I-75, I hope some of you have been able to see them, and you're coming back from Orlando. We have the, the, on the tank full marketing that is ongoing, that's reaching the communities that are within a tank full of Tarpon Springs, so going from Crystal River, Homo Sassa Aireoli, down to Sarasota, so that's been ongoing, I think we've had those in about eight different communities so far, we'll be continuing that. We have our website that we have up and running now, we're still working on it, it's a work in progress, but we do have it live, we've been getting a, a good reaction to that. So we would like to continue all of these activities going forward, with additional budgeting again, I don't think that money's in the budget right now, but with those additional funds, we'd like to do that, and then we'll be regrouping now in the next month or so, and coming up with any new activities that we would like to do for the ongoing fiscal year.
Diane Wood, Cultural and Civic Services. I feel like the marketing campaign that we started this year is, you know, very balanced in the media that we're using, from print to digital, to newsletters, the billboards, I think we've got great exposure, I think we've got a great logo, and I'm very excited about the website, because over time, we're going to be able to measure, you know, the analytics on that, and that will be able to, you know, give you some good information, so I'm excited about that prospect as well. But I feel like we should, we've got the motivation now to start, you know, the next phase of the campaign and the new fiscal year, and we'll just continue to, you know, look for new opportunities to, you know, celebrate the city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. My next question is on hotel tax. I asked the same question last year, why we're not receiving any hotel tax, and my understanding is that that can be used on events, and I was just wondering if some of those events that we already doing in Tarpon, like the Epiphany, First Friday, Night in the Islands festivals, can we apply some of the money? And the other one is for capital projects. I wonder if we qualify and ask for grants for a senior center in Tarpon Springs.
Sorry, was the first question on the hotel tax?
First was on, you have to have events, since we're doing the Epiphany celebration, the First Friday, Night in the Islands, Art Festival.
You're talking about having a hotel tax for that?
Yeah.
Well, the hotel tax doesn't come to the city, that goes to the county, and then I think you have to get with the county to try to petition them to bring the money up here. So we don't get that money directly.
But we, what I'm asking is if we can actually apply for this grant, or request these funds, like other cities?
Yes, I believe you'd have to go through them and...
For the events, because I believe it takes, the criteria is events and capital, is that correct, Mr. Licures?
Karen, you want to come talk about it, because we've, we've examined and looked at that, and looked at the criteria for getting that, and I think Karen has been the one who's been looking at that, and...
Yeah, that's through the Tourism Development Council, the Tourism Development Tax, or St. Pete Clearwater CBB, and I've been going to those meetings. There's criteria for getting grants for festivals. A lot of it has to do with stays, you have to have a certain minimum amount of people who are staying in a hotel, and you have to show that. You have to have a certain minimum number of people attending an event, those have to be from outside of the area, so they're, they're meant to be attracting people from outside who are staying in hotels. We've looked at all of our events so far, and none of them rise to that, that threshold of the number of people and the, the description of staying at a hotel, you have to prove the overnight stays. Some of the events that they've had are like the Grand Prix at Raymond James, the, the festivals there, those are festivals that are bringing in people from all over the state. We, we don't have any that are of the size, and that we can prove the criteria that people are staying in our hotels, and staying overnight. But we continue to work with them, we continue to go to the meetings, if we have an event that's large enough, we certainly will apply to, to get some grants.
Epiphany celebration should be large enough.
Excuse me?
The Epiphany celebration on November 5th, that should be large enough to qualify, wouldn't you think?
Well, that's a...
You get about 20,000 people coming to Tarpon Springs.
Yeah, and then there was a discussion on that, because Mayor Kretikos is on the board, and he was discussing that one in particular. There was an issue they had with that, because it's, it's a religious event, so they were actually looking at that one to see if that would be something that they could add to the criteria. And I don't believe they've made the designation on that yet, but again, we'd have to show that these, that the people that are coming are staying in hotels, and we, we have to prove that, we have to do a study to show that these people that are coming are staying in hotels. The other, the other factor in that is admission requirements. All of those, all of those festivals have admission requirements, none of ours are, are festivals that you have to pay to get to, except perhaps the, the Chamber one, the Fine Arts Festival, but it's, it's a paid event, you have to show overnight stays at hotels... You have to show overnight stays at hotels and then there's a minimum criteria for attendance.
The other criteria is supposed to be capital. I was just wondering if building a, or creating a senior center, they'll qualify for that.
I'd have to look at that because the capital projects have been baseball stadiums and large museums and projects like that. So, we'd have to take a look at if that would be a large enough project.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question since you're on this topic?
Yeah.
I know I've met with County Commissioner Eggers at one point about the dredge or the additional dredge that needs to be done. And he brought up something along the lines of the tourism tax. And I know there's an economic study that was completed that showed the amount of bed tax that's created from the sponge docks and the tourism industry itself and Tarpon Springs. So, is Tarpon Springs ever leveraged that use somehow in the sponge docks? If it's with the stormwater projects? Or, I mean, we're able to show that there's a bed tax. I think we have that in a study, right? It's $400,000 a year, I believe. Has that been looked into further or, I just want to follow up about that?
Yeah, I haven't had any conversations with him in terms of that, of the dredge project. But all those bed taxes go into, into one pot of money of the CBB and then it gets distributed. Most of it goes toward the running of the CBB itself. It's the salaries and the advertising and everything that you advertise the region. That's the point. And then, there's certain money set aside for the special projects, the festivals and the smaller festivals. And then, for capital projects like the stadium, they're talking now about the Phillies. The Dunedin Project was funded through that tax. So, the funding then gets put into all these different pieces. Whether we could use that, some of that money and ask for dredge as a capital project, I haven't looked at that. So, we could look at that.
Even other aspects of the sponge docks too. I know flooding is a hot topic of the sponge docks or some other capital projects that the city could look at. And maybe an avenue where we could leverage as a city, a Tarpon Springs, because we could show bed tax with that economic study. And that would be a justifiable, I think, aspect for that hotel tax.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, we don't generate a lot of bed tax compared to other cities, but we do generate bed tax. So, you know, we have a stake in that money, just like every other community does. So, we have a project that would fulfill all the requirements. We certainly need to get our fair share as well.
And with special events, you know, there will be some special events that we'll be doing, we'll be doing with this budget money. We're talking about a new event for St. Patrick's Day and possibly an equivalent of dying the river or the bayou or something like that. Again, those will not be ones that will meet those criteria. But again, we're still also looking at some events and stuff to add to our repertoire that, you know, we'll have to have budgetary money for so. So, we will be talking about some of those in the future as far as events goes while we're on the subject of events.
Yeah, we just don't want to lose any money if that's available out there, you know?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next thing that I want to talk about is the millage. Our revenue of general fund has increased by $1.3 million or 5.24%. And of course, our expenses have been increased as well. The property values have increased by 6.44%. I guess everybody knows that one of my goals has always have been is to reduce the millage when we can. Back in 2017, we reduced the millage with my initiative from 5.45 to 5.42 mills. I believe now, with the increase that we have with our revenue, I proposing that we reduce the millage from 5.42 to 5.37 mills. That will show that we're trying to reduce the millage, but also maintaining our emergency fund of 8.8 million for any emergency, for any catastrophic event might happen and still have the full-service city. Mr. Licouris, I don't expect you to have an answer now, but if you please take a look at it and with our finance director and come back to us on the next, next meeting. And I also like to ask my fellow commissions to, I want to get their opinion on that. So, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, you said 5.37?
Yeah, from 5.42 to 5.37.
So, it's half a mill? Is that right?
Something like that, yeah.
Is that right or no?
No.
No, it's .05.
.05.
It would be about, every .01 is an $18,000 decrease in revenue. So, going to .0, down to 5.37 would be about $90,000 less in revenues to the general fund.
So, here's the rule of thumb and what you have to think about as you talk about this tonight. You need to keep that in consideration, everything you do tonight and everything you do the 12th. You need to look at the budget. You need to look at what you want in the budget. You need to look at, right now, there's a fund that we have in debt. We always like to leave money for the commission for their items they want to do to designate. It usually grows when some of the things, in reference of health, comes in at 7% instead of 10%. Then, that 3% would go into that pile of money. Right now, seeing there's $120,000 of discretionary money, the way the budget is for this board to decide. So, it's going to be your decision as you look at what you want to do and what projects you're going to do, what you want to cut, how you want to use that $120,000 or whatever money's come in. Use that formula, it's 18,000 per that .01%. So, you know, 18, you know, just keep doing that up to what this proposed here, which is, this is $90,000?
Yeah, 90, for the, going down to 5.37 would be 90,000.
When you see that, when you see what you want to do, when you see how you want to use that money, that whole formula comes into where that, for instance, right now, if everything stayed the same of that $120,000, if you use 90,000 of it to reduce the millage, then there'd be 30,000 right now for you to use or, you know, cut something else in the budget and use that towards. So, this has to be in your mind. Obviously, what we always do when it comes to the form is the 5.42 is the highest we can go. And that's what's going to be proposed when that comes forward. That's going to be proposed, but you can go lower. You cannot go higher than that and we know right now from this board, I can tell you this board's not going higher. So, that's a good thing. But we would say the, because once we set that and it'll be set before you decide these things in the budget, you can't go up. So, this would be a decision you have to keep in your mind all throughout the process. And when we get through the 12th and all the things the commission wants in there to add and subtract, the amount of money times that 18,000 per .01%, that would be your ability to cut it and keep the budget the same. So, again, it's moving on what you want to do and what additions and traction you make in there to do.
It can also, let me give the mayor some feedback if that's right, will you, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I mean, the first thing I'll say is, there's not, we can, we can reduce the millage, not just with the $120,000 pot of money that you're talking about. It can, we can reduce it and balance the budget from other places too, in theory.
Yeah.
So, and then the other thing I'll say too is if that, you know, we get in a position where we need to get some more money, we can always do a budget resolution, right? In terms of discretionary money? Like, we set the military, the budgets balanced halfway through the year, we need some more money for something.
Yes, you go into reserves and get the money, yeah. That's where you go into reserves and get the money.
If it was necessary, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
So, you know, in terms of giving the mayor some feedback on what he's potentially proposing or, you know, reducing the millage rate to 5.37, I'll say that, you know, generally speaking, I would always support a reduction in the millage rate, given that it's an appropriate time to do so or we're not putting ourselves in jeopardy in one way or the other. You know, I do think, I've always been a proponent of generally doing it. And I think I was on the board when we reduced it in 2017 and supported that initiative then. So, the biggest thing for me as it relates to the millage and staying competitive with the surrounding communities is that in itself. It's just for a full-service community saying competitive regarding our millage rate and our expenses and taxes and things like that. I'll say that if you are going to reduce the millage rate, I find it more productive to do so in fat years versus in lean years, right? In lean years, you're generally looking to like, where are we going to get the money to balance the budget? Versus in a fat year where, you know, essentially, our property taxable value increases have almost balanced the budget with exception to a few big expenses and some enterprise fund. So, I mean, if we're going to reduce the millage rate, it's a good year to do it. So, if that gives you any feedback.
Let me see the call.
Thanks, Mayor. I know we've had this conversation past couple of years. I first want to come back to the Budget Advisory Board. I know one of the recommendations was not to raise it. Was it not to decrease it also? I can't remember. Did I keep it the same? Okay. With that, I respect that opinion from all the board members, but I would be in favor to decreasing it in this situation. And here's a few reasons why. It's projected over, I know this 1.5 is brought up and my math came out to 1.8. Over the past three years, we've seen an increase in the ad valorem tax increase. Then, if I go back to 2014, we're looking at a $2.7 million increase to the ad valorem taxes that we're bringing in at the city revenue-wise. So, I would completely be in favor. I think it's time to, to, to show the citizens that the city is looking to do a tax decrease. We've seen increases on water rates. We've seen some other increases around. The millage was increased when the economy was going down. We had to increase, or the commission at the time had to increase the millage to supplement the taxes, to increase the revenue. And I think right now with the taxable values as high as they are, it's worth, it's worth it if we need to give up a small project here or there or rebalance some areas to the taxpayers or the citizens. One of the other areas, Mayor, that I want to talk about also would be the administrative fees that are coming out of the water and stormwater and sanitation funds. We'll talk about that later and I think it ties into all this as well.
Yeah.
But that's something I would be in support of. Yes, so I would be in support of a tax decrease right now.
Thank you. Mission done.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, anytime we can reduce the millage, I'm all for it, again, as long as it's fiscally responsible. I'm not too concerned with the $120,000 kind of artificial cap that's there because, again, in theory, I mean, we can get flexible from other places. But again, I mean, I want to hear more from the Budget Advisory Committee and see some more statistics on all the possible outcomes. But overall, I would support it right now. I think this is one of the easiest ways we can make our citizens' lives easier. And this is one of the most direct ways that our decisions affect them. So, I would absolutely support the lowered millage rate.
Yeah. Thank you. Again, I'd like to ask Mr. Licouris and Mr. Herrick that if they take a look at it and come back with the information for that. And if you please work with the Budget Advisory Committee as well. And again, I appreciate your input and your recommendations, but I think this year is the better year to reduce the millage with the increase of the revenue that we have. Thank you. Next item that I want to talk about is FEMA. We received $313,000 for FEMA. Are we expecting any reimbursements to come to it?
I'm sorry, are we expecting any more?
Any more, any reimbursements to come to it?
Well, Mayor, we got the main, from the EOPP employees that work there, we got a little over $300,000. We are still waiting on about 1.2 million of the debris removal that was charged to the sanitation fund. So, we're going on almost two years and we're not alone in this. I don't know if some of it's political that, as far as getting the money, but all our paperwork is with the FEMA. The state has auditors, Grant Thornton, that are digging through this. They just had us some questions last week and they're just trying to verify some load tickets when they went to pick it up. So, we have 1.2 million we're waiting to get back. Of the 1.3 million of charges, we're saying, we're thinking we'll probably get about 1.2 million of that back.
Do you know if the funds have already been transferred to state, to the state or still under FEMA?
I'm sorry, are the...
If the funds have already been transferred to the state level or...
No, they're still with the federal government. The state goes through it and they're trying to validate the expenditures right now. They're looking at all the load tickets and once they approve that, then the federal government would release the money.
Yeah. Well, when I was in the conference in Orlando, I met that guy in charge of FEMA. And he promised me if I have any concerns to give him a call. So, if you give me that information, I call him, maybe you'll be some help to it.
I will get that right away.
Well, doesn't hurt to try, doesn't it?
Mayor, I have a question about that.
Of course.
We're assuming we get the 1.2 million, where's it go?
It goes back into the sanitation fund where we've budgeted or reserved for that. And that's part of my concern is that we had like a little over 3 million in there. We spent 1.3 million, so we're down to about $2 million reserve in there. And my concern is if it takes FEMA so long, what happens if we have another hurricane? What happens if we have two in a year? You know, if that happens, maybe we're having to go into the general fund to cover debris removal. So, it'd be nice if FEMA was a little faster on this, but...
Well, you promised me that, so I won't, I won't let him forget it. I know that the next workshop, work session is going to be on August 12th and we're going to be talking about wages. But, Mr. Licouris, is there any way they can provide us some data? If you can compare the wages of our management team compared to the other cities and see how we're doing?
What's your meaning of management team?
Well, it'll be, I guess, from supervisor all the way up to you. Yeah. No, from a supervisor all the way up to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Licouris, do we have any general fund projects scheduled for, to be done next year? I know our Public Works Department did a lot of projects this year and we are very fortunate. We've got many talented people. Do you have a lot of projects scheduled for that?
And we'll be talking about those next meeting.
Yeah, can you share that with us as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that my friend there is waiting for it. Thank you. But anyway, they're doing an excellent job. Please let them know. Some of the projects that I am, you know, I want to see to be done in the city in the short term or long term is the fire station on the Gulf Road, the senior center, parking garage, boat ramp with parking, and to rebuild the tennis courts on Riverside Drive. So, this is what I have and I want to turn it over to Vice Mayor Terrapet.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some relatively general questions, observations. Some of it's been covered and I made some notes in Ron's presentation, so I'll, I'll start there. Page six, Ron, of your presentation, The Pamphlet. I just wanted to point out, and some of this is rhetorical, some of it's for members of the public who are tuning in online. But if you look at the, on page ten, or, sorry, page six of your handout and it says total city budget and it looks, you know, perceivably that there's a 10% increase, which there is. But I think that it's important, initially, when you look at that, your kind of eyeballs pop out of your head a little bit and 10% increase to the city's budget in a given year is pretty substantial. But I think it's important to recognize and go down, you know, the line a little bit in the, in the fact in the water and sewer fund, you know, attributes for 12% and then the stormwater, there's that 136%. So, I think if you were to more or less take those out there and of these five funds accumulate 90% of the city's budget, it basically equates to somewhere around a 5% change. Is that right?
Correct, if you take out those capital items in those funds, correct.
Right, which is a lot more palatable than a 10% increase.
10%.
And in part, I wanted to touch on some of the, something that the mayor just left on is regarding our personnel costs, which make up, you know, a percentage of this increase. Part of the reason I feel like why we have an increase in, or a rise in personnel cost is as it relates to, as much as we're trying to do. I mean, we're trying to run full bore with projects and inspectors and the town is growing, you know, at a strong pace right now. So, to me, it's important to highlight that some of that personnel cost is just out of pure necessity in hiring new people and creating new positions versus just, you know, salary increase. So, I think that's important to note. In the general fund on that line, you have salary and benefits and then R and M. I was hoping that you could elaborate on R and M. Just tell us what that meaning is.
Well, repairs and maintenance. To me, we're seeing a lot more in repairs and maintenance. And what I've seen over the last, I think, four years, you know, where we used to be like 600,000 a year, we're getting up close to a million a year in repairs and maintenance. What I've seen is a lot of it's software and, I think, communication these days and the maintenance required for it. You know, everybody wants transparency, so there's a lot of IT maintenance. I know I mentioned the Microsoft MDM 360, 365, whatever it is. I'm not sure what it is, but that's something that's required for the IT, the firewalls that are being required, the security that's being required. It's also, it's also repairs and maintenance on communication and the police department and all the software they've got. So, a lot, I'm just seeing a lot more maintenance between IT, police and fire departments where it's increased over the last four years.
So, in the, on page nine, and I want, I'm flipping ahead a few pages... So in the, on page nine, and I want, I'm flipping ahead a few pages, but on page nine, you have that operating expenditures increase around a little, about 560,000. That's within that, let's see, that's within that million three increase between fiscal year 2019 and 2020?
Well, that is the total city. That's all part of the total city. That's not just the general fund.
Oh, that's right, 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 okay. But the IT costs there are 70,000.
Yes, and that is mostly the general, general fund there.
Okay. Let's see here. And then on page seven, so the unassigned fund balance right now is 8.8 million. Is that right?
Yes.
And then again, for the public, as a percentage of our general fund budget, we need to keep how much in reserve?
We have the fund balance policy is 20, 20%.
Of the general fund?
Of the general fund expenditures, yes.
So the property insurance on page seven is a 10% increase, and you're estimating that, correct?
Correct.
Now, property insurance, you could elaborate. That's this building, that's all of our?
It's all the buildings. It's a property liability insurance and the auto insurance, too.
And have we looked at possibly a way to reduce that, get credits as it relates to new roof, new windows? Commissioner Donovan can probably elaborate on this. I mean, you know, you put a brand new roof on the library. In theory, the library insurance should maybe be reduced, right?
I would imagine so. I think that'd be a question, once we do that, in getting with the Florida League of Cities, who handles our insurance policy.
Right. The increase in insurance, to me, is to be expected from a health and dental, you know, standpoint. The property insurance, to me, you know, I think is competitive enough to where we can try and reduce that. I mean, obviously, with older buildings, insurance is expensive, and we have a lot of older buildings. But I'd like to, I'd like to look at the property insurance and try and see if we can't fine tune that in such a way to where we can reduce it, or at least look to reduce it and be actively talking to the municipal insurance trust to try and figure out a way, or, or propose to them, like, look, in this building, we did this, in this building, we did that, and try and bring that number down some. I had on page eight, I just wanted to point out that the property taxable values, that increase of 6.4%. To me, if you look at the, going back to the increase in the budget, with the exception to the capital projects, if it's right around a 5% increase, like I said before, the, the increase in property tax values has, in theory, kind of balanced our budget. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, and then on page nine, the CRA plan update. Is that, is that expense coming out of the CRA, or is that a general fund expense?
CRA.
Okay, so that's something to me that I would not support. I think that the plan needs to be updated in aspect. But I'd rather see that, if, assuming the $75,000 would come out of CRA account, I would rather see that money go towards more bricks and mortar type things. You know, more money in the facade grant programs or other grant programs that I feel like have really benefited the CRA in general. If we wanted to put that, that $75,000 or, or that expenditure in a different category, if the general fund wanted to pick that up, then I would move forward with it. But, you know, there are parts of the CRA that need, the plan that needs to be updated. There's, you know, no doubt about that. But for me, the 75 grand, I feel like is more beneficial through bricks and mortar or project, you know, tree planting, I mean, new light poles, things of that nature versus updating the plan as a whole. I feel like we could potentially continue to, you know, on a, so to speak, on a case by case basis, update the plan, you know, versus just spending 75 grand to do it at once. I think that that money's better, you know, more beneficial to items that I suggested.
And the 12th, we'll, we'll bring the layout of where we got the figure from, what all it gets you, where you're going to decide, well, we want this portion, not this portion. So all that would be laid out in the different layers that you can do, and what we've got from other cities. Have you look at all those things, and then you make a decide then, but that, that will be bringing you to 12th to look at.
And on the 12th, when you're doing that, in terms of adding perspective to, you know, how far CRA monies are going, you know, we'll have the, hopefully, we'll have the statistics, which generally you do, on the grants, how many have been had, you know, where the grant funds at now, how much money's in the CRA. So it's, you get a full perspective on our, on our CRA in general.
Right.
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, I, I think we are getting a, maybe you mentioned that, we are getting a grant for 25,000 for this, for the plan update?
Just for us, that's just for.
That's off of that one, okay.
Having it, that's, that's nothing.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll have all, the whole thing that you talked about, we'll have that for, for you on the 12th.
I mean, and if there's another option for, you know, to, to, to pay for it through a different fund or a different account, then I would be more willing to do so. I just don't want the CRA to pay for it. The electric costs at the water plant, as a percentage, in terms of the revenue that's generated from that, as an expense, if you, if you could say as a percentage, what do you think that is?
Paul, you want to come, Paul's done, done, looked at that and has a perspective on that, Paul. Can you come up and talk about that?
Paul Smith, Public Services Director. I want to make sure I understand the question.
Well, I'm looking at the electric costs at the water plant, right? That's about 100 grand. So as an expense in relation to revenue, the water plant, in terms of water sales generates, and I know that Ron had that in the, in this presentation, I just don't know where to go back and find it right now, but how much revenue does the water plant generate? And then I'm looking at the electric cost, this as an expense.
Yeah, if I could put it in perspective, we're looking at somewhere around operating $1.6 million for the reverse osmosis facility. And then if you add the personnel in, it's another 1.1. So you're somewhere around $2.7 million in operating costs. So that's where that 100,000 would fit in. That would be somewhere around, oh, I need a little help with that math, but.
Oh, that's the increase.
One, about 3%, I think, somewhere in that.
Explain the increase, explain, that was one of the questions that I sent to Commissioner Carr. Explain, explain what that is, explain how the solar project, hopefully, will contribute and bring that down.
Sure. There's several things at play there that make the electric bills go up. The first obvious one is to Duke Energy increase their rates. We went back and looked at, and I will tell you, these rate schedules are very complex. There's lots of combinations of on-peak, off-peak, fixed charges. So we looked at the same month for going back three years. And we measured the difference between 2017 and 2019, and we came up with almost a 24% difference in the rate for this particular setup of the RO facility and all the wells. So that's a significant impact on us. We're doing some other things, though, to reduce those costs. We've got a solar project going on now that you all have supported. We estimated at that time, that's about a 50,000 per year reduction in electrical costs. So that's going to help us moving forward. We're also doing some things operationally. We're adding some new wells that'll affect the overall salinity of the water with the RO facility. The saltier the water coming in, the more pressure it takes to treat it, the more energy it takes. So that's going to help bring that down. And then finally, we developed in-house our own way to clean the membranes. Just like any kind of filter, these membranes build up over time, and it makes back pressure. So when we can do a special cleaning, we did a lot of research on this, had a company come in and work with us on it, we're able to reduce that back pressure. That's something we can only do maybe every two or three years, but it's something that's going to help us keep those costs down.
And the solar project, when do you expect that to be online? Because that basically takes half of that increase in itself.
Yeah, the original estimate was four months. We're going to be getting started in September for construction, so we should be online, I'd say, within six months or so.
Cool. And Ron covered the IT maintenance costs in a nutshell. On page 13, under operating expense, you have health insurance consultant. I was hoping that you could touch on the, on who that consultant is, or what we're utilizing him for.
Well, right now, we're, we're, we're going out to bid. So we're going out to bid for those services.
Oh, that's, that's.
That, yeah, what the board decided on.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So that's, that's in the process, and we're, we're getting into the, the, beginning of the bid process now to bring whichever firm we choose on board.
Got it. Page 15, you have charges for service on the county funding fire, county funding EMS. And this is a charge, this is our charge to the county. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a, the fire is a county, the money we get from the county. The fire portion is the portion they pay for us for taking care of the area outside the city and, the unincorporated area.
So my question is, that 20 grand seems a little light. How's that negotiated?
Well, that's, that's the increase. It, it's.
Okay, that's the increase again.
The total is 380,000 is what we're, what we've budgeted.
Sounds a lot better, Ron. That's all I got for the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thanks for your comments and taking half my comments out. Appreciate it. But a couple of items I just want to touch base on, I've got some items that's going to be following under the enterprise, obviously, so I may overlap a couple of them, but I'll try to do my best. So I want to start off with the marketing fund. I'm happy to support that. I believe it's 35,000 or 30,000 that's in there. There is a line on page 143, and it's line 48, and it talks about, I think it's $20,000. And I was just curious what that actually entails, if someone could let me know about that. Uh, 148? Uh, that's not right. Well, I don't know if Diane knows, or if the, Ron knows. It's a $20,000, it's under the marketing section.
148?
That's not 148 after I look at it, actually, so.
You know, we've got 100, I'm, I'm sorry, we got 35,000 on
143.
Page 143.
Yeah, 143. So above that, there's a $20,000. It's tourism local promotion. What, what does that entail? I was just curious. Is that something that we, as a city, does on top of the marketing funds with the local department?
Yeah, I don't know if that's part of, I'll let them answer that.
I got a good idea.
That's the ongoing things that we've been doing, the advertising in the Tampa Bay Times, those inserts that go in in the, in the Sunday newspapers. That's the things that we've been doing all along.
Okay, so that's 20,000 for that, and then also additional, well, then there's brochure distribution of 13,000, and then a total of 35,000 for additional, right? So we're looking at 55, 65, 68,000 or so in advertising dollars. Am I right in saying that?
Right, because some of that, the 20 also includes, we've got billboards at St. Pete Clearwater Airport, inside the baggage claim carousels. We have a lot of advertising that we split with the Merchants Association. And then those brochures, those are our city main tourism brochures that we print a couple hundred thousand every year. Those go to all the AAA centers, all of the locations, the tourist locations all throughout the state. And that's something that we've got ongoing. Everywhere you see those kiosks and all the brochures, when you go to gas stations and other, you know, tourist places, you'll see our brochures there.
Got it. So I'm, I'm complete supporter of this continuing. And also, I support this, using the funds over hiring an additional position when we have a combination of the economic developer, the research and information staff member, and also the arts marketing team member as well. So I think it's prudent that the city continues to fund this instead of hiring a new position. And also, tourism is lifeblood and has such a large impact indirectly, indirectly to our economy here in Tarpin Springs. So I do feel that it's important that we continue to do this. Just on the same line, there's a, there's a grant, I'm sorry, there's a grant aid. I just want to point out to the Pinellas Safe Harbor, I believe that's a foundation that helps abuse women that have been abused.
That's the, that's the homeless.
The homeless one?
That, that's where we bring, where our officer, our community homeless officer brings the, brings them in, let our go to.
Okay, so I'm happy to support that one as well. A few items I just want to bring up, just for discussion, maybe for the next time around, is I, I believe there's an area that we can use some help on in code enforcement for just an additional person that could go around and help with the officer that currently does this as a whole. It's obviously an important part. I hear a lot of this throughout the, the city from the city residents, that they feel that there's some areas that definitely need to be improved upon. So I would support also some additional help there. And again, this is an area that we wouldn't have to necessarily fund out of general funds. It could be out of the fines that have, I, I'm not saying there should be a quote or anything along those lines, but there's obviously fines that are collected through the code enforcement. And this position can be funded specifically through those fines collected. And I think as a commission, we should look at how these code enforcement funds are, how they're allocated once they're received, instead of going directly into the general funds. Look at beautification, look at other aspects, and I would like to have that as an agenda item as well in the future to discuss as well.
Absolutely. So as it relates to the additional help for code enforcement, one, I guess when the time comes, maybe you can further elaborate on what you envision for that position, because it seems like the current code enforcement officer is doing a lot more now than has been done in the past. Good, you know, good and bad. I mean, some people don't like it because they're getting fined, and some people like it because we're beautifying, you know, helping clean up the city. But at, when you bring that forward, if you can elaborate on what you think that position should entail, and then also, I think you're on to something with trying to better allocate those fines that are collected and put them to use. And I would just say that I think you should put that on an agenda sooner than later to discuss it as it relates to budget season.
Agreed. City manager?
Also, if you want to add to that, the court enforcement officer now is part of the police department.
Right.
So what, you know, you think the next, you know, the other person will be, his help will be part of the police department or in the civilian position?
Or is it admin help?
Well, yeah, yeah, something.
And I'll connect with the police chief about that, too. That's something that we can talk about, obviously. Okay. One other thing I saw, when I was looking at the budget, I didn't see any maintenance budgeted for the Safford House. I know it's a wooden structure. The porch, I think, was in pretty rough shape at one point. Is there a need? I'm not sure he would be responsible for that. But I think it'd be prudent to look at or allocate some money each year.
I think Ron's looking to try to find the maintenance now.
Under the Safford, I didn't really see anything under the Safford House really budgeted for much. But I think it's important that there's something that needs to be done there, just because I know with the, the old city hall in downtown, what's it called?
Yeah, what they usually, within that department there.
What was that, Ron?
I'm, I'm sorry. But is it within, within that department, they usually budget the maintenance for the Safford House?
I'm looking, too, to see if there's anything in, in his budget. Sometimes it'll be in his budget.
Okay.
So I think he's looking, as we're talking, he's, he's looking right now.
I just want to bring that up, because I think there's, we need to put some eyes on it. And now that we don't have a staff member there full time, that, I just don't want that to be neglected in any way, because obviously wood rot is a detriment to our buildings here in, in Florida.
Okay, we'll be looking for that and get back to you.
Cemetery, that's the enterprise fund, right?
The cemetery?
Yes.
It's not an enterprise, it's part of the general fund.
Okay, let's talk about it then. There's been some articles over the past years about Rose Cemetery, and I know Rose Cemetery is not a city-owned cemetery, but obviously has a lot of residents, and it has a lot of history. It was a cemetery, it was on the historic registry before the city-owned cemetery. There's, it's a community and a culture that have a lot of families that are in a demographic of Tarpin Springs that may have not been honored in the way they should have been honored in the past. And I think it would be prudent and would be a great thing to see the city partner with the people that, that run that cemetery. And if it's looking at using the interest that's earned on the perpetual fund, if it's $2,000 to $5,000 for a few years to help with beautification of the front, or if it's, if we are allocating some staff help to help mow some of the areas. I'm not really sure how that could work, but I think it would be, I think it's, I think it's deserved to show respect to all the past city residents that are buried there, to really partner with the Rose Cemetery as the city's Tarpin Spring. So I'd like to make that recommendation somehow work with them. I'm not, I mean, those are a couple of ideas. Maybe there's some other ideas that we could come up with as a, as a city. Coming back to, or staying on the interest rate. Coming back to, uh, or staying on the interest rates, uh, Ron, if you could, is, what is the, um, the reserves typically? Um, produce on the interest rates? I know they range from like two to like two-point-five percent in CDs and rotating CDs.
Well, the interest rates, we were going up until about the middle, um, towards the middle of December. Rates were going up nicely, CDs, federal instruments. And then all of a sudden you had, um, tariffs, trade talks, government shutdown. So where we used to be able to get interest, uh, three percent a little above. Right now we're right a little bit above two percent. Uh, we just bought something for two-point-one-five, a, a CD just last week. So we've seen them come down about, you know, one percent.
So the interest that we earn off that, does that just go right back in the general fund, or where does that actually go?
Well, it depends on where, where the, we got them across funds. If it's a general fund, most of it's general fund, um, water and sewer fund sanitation. They're the ones that have the majority of the money, stormwater fund. Um, we've got a money market, um, they're, they've still kept it at two-point-zero-five percent. So a lot of the other funds, that money's in there.
Okay, uh, I, I do want to make a recommendation that we look, or the, the board also look at, um, how we allocate as a board. The interest that's earned off the reserve or unallocated funds. Instead of just going right back into the unallocated and how we can potentially look at using that additional interest on additional sidewalks and additional road resurfacing in Tarpon Springs. Uh, these are areas obviously that we could improve upon, and there's always complaints coming in through about quality of roads and sidewalks, et cetera. Um, and how that can be allocated. Currently today, though, the allocation for the annual budget, I believe, is off a perpetual fund. That's a two million dollar, that's per charter that we need to have, um, as a city, if I'm correct by that. One of my recommendations is actually to go ahead and get rid of that, uh, and then use that money for a current project and allocate the two million dollars at least in the unassigned funds. To fulfill that, um. That, that hole or that need. And then also we could look at additional interest that's earned as well for additional sidewalk repairs, street repairs. Uh, and then the second, or the second recommendation out of that would maybe look at looking to restore some of the roads that used to be brick. Um, or focusing on the brick roads that need to be restored, uh, still around Tarpon Springs. Obviously, that's, uh, brings in a lot of character, a lot of, um, a lot of history, uh, to Tarpon Springs or the brick roads. So, um, any way we could look at using brick additionally around the town, the roads would, I think, be beneficial to the city. Um, one, a couple of other items I would like to bring up is solar panels. I know this would be a capital expense, but this is actually falling into the general fund for, uh, our electric cost. Uh, I would be in support of pulling out some type of debt, um, to, um, add solar panels to city hall, the community center, public safety building. Um, ultimately the areas that produce or that pull a lot of electricity. I believe city hall's around fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and electricity, uh, the city pays from Duke Energy. So, uh, I know there's also a lot of solar panel companies that work with, that have engineers that could come up with a plan where you could have some type of low, um, interest-bearing loan against the solar panels. The solar panels pay off the loan and also help cover a significant amount of electricity over a certain amount of years. Uh, this just seems like a no-brainer to me, uh, and it should be something I think we look at for all the city buildings, especially since the cost of solar has gone down significantly. And then at that point, it gives us, as a city, more money to use in other funds instead of paying Duke Energy the electricity bills.
Let me know about you for a second. Uh, on the solar energy, uh, USF is willing to work with us. Uh, USF Engineering Department is willing to work with us to do any design that we want for free.
Great.
So, um, Dr. Ferekides is waiting for a phone call.
Okay.
Yeah. I think he's working with Paul right now on a project to, uh, write to the, uh, oil plant.
It's great news.
Good stuff.
Um, this one is going to fall into next meeting, but I just want to bring it up, uh, executive assistant. We have a handful around, uh, city of Tarpon Springs. We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Uh, I think there's a pretty large disparity between the wages of the executive assistants, so somehow.
Can we talk about the wages during the next meeting or?
Yeah, I'm going to bring it up now because I don't want to wait, uh, for, I just, I think, I want to have more information the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm just bringing it up because I think it needs to be brought up because there's just a large disparity between, between these. So if you could bring it for the next meeting. Um, some additional information to where we can make this level set. And again, Chairman Banther brought up something along the lines of the mayor and Commissioner Pay. That was brought up, I think, what their recommendation was is if you have a family that's on the health insurance. That you wouldn't have to pay as a commissioner, the city, money to cover your health insurance costs. So I think that was the justification behind making the raise to the city commissioners. Uh, and then secondly, I would like to ask that, um, this commission, I think, should be equipped with tablets. Instead of getting binders every week for the meetings, that we should have some type of tablet, uh, that we could work off of. Um, I really like my phone, but it's difficult to get all my emails off of that and just work off my phone for all the projects. So, uh, I would encourage that the city look at another aspect. I think it's a green initiative or a sustainable initiative as well. Is to stop printing all the paper that we print. It could help save on the paper cost, uh, that we look at using tablets, uh, for the commissioners.
It's pretty common, just like, I mean.
Across the city, yeah.
Yeah, pretty common.
Um, overtime pay, would that fall under salaries area? I mean, that's, what would you call that, Mark?
Unless you need more information, you know, to give right now.
It probably, it probably almost fall both.
I'm fine with waiting until next meeting for it. I mean, there's just a significant amount of overtime.
More information is good to bring it up so they have a ready.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be wise, and I've talked to the police chief about this, but, um, currently, and it's been over the past handful of years. The combined, the police and fire have been spending around a million dollars in overtime amongst the two, uh, organizations within the city. So I would like, uh, the police chief to share a little bit about, um, the needs and explain a little bit of why they're budgeting four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. Uh, for overtime this year, and it's been that way for some, a handful of years now. So if you could touch on that a few, a few minutes. Is it just for next meeting then?
Uh, that's good. I mean, that way we have that information.
Okay. And so I know we've, the city as a whole too, it, it's about two-seventy-five for the fire. So I know we've gone past that as a city in the four-hundred-thousand-dollar range, so if we could touch on that as well from the fire standpoint. Again, I know the, uh, CRA is about, uh, I want to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Terpenny talked about and what the CRA is developed for and what it's actually intended for. Uh, currently the CRA funds one-point-eight FTEs out of the revenues for the CRA each year. Um, I feel like this should be funded out of the general funds unless these individuals or these FTEs are being utilized within the CRA itself. Uh, and the goal of the CRA is beautification and removal, um, and removing blighted properties. Uh, so unless we're using these staff members for that, I don't really feel that it's fair that we're taking the funds that should be used for those types of items. Um, out of the CRA. So I would encourage that those would also come out of the, um.
And we can get either now or then, and we've got the figures. Those are actual hours that we use if you want to do it now or you want to do it with a salary.
I don't really have the data. Let's wait, let's do it first, you know?
Okay.
And then if we could touch a little bit on the LED lights for the, um. Look, it's slide thirteen. It talks about electric streetlights, LED maintenance and setting new lights. Uh, is there any common sense has said LED lights use less electricity, you would think they'd be cheaper to run? So if someone could touch on that a little bit on this for me?
Good evening.
Good evening, Tom, Function Public Works Director. Yeah, actually, you're right. They actually are cheaper to run. They're more expensive, actually, on the initial installation. And the maintenance costs are a little bit higher. So it kind of washes itself out if you're talking about the Duke Energy lights going in. Uh, it's a small percentage, it's not very much. And what they're doing is as these new lights come in, we're, we're actually collecting, well, they're actually collecting the maintenance costs now. And over time, as the usage drops down, it should again level off and, and, and be much better at that, at that point. You won't see large increases like we have.
How long do these lights last for, Tom? Typically, compared to the traditional lights?
Traditional lights? They're saying fifteen to twenty years.
And a traditional light lasts around one, three to five or so?
Seven to ten years on, on average, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's a big difference, right?
Yeah, and they got a lot of the money where you see the increase was those additional light, they, you explain what you look with.
Yeah, there's additional lights on US nineteen. We actually have, uh, uh, we actually get funds back from FDOT, but they added additional seventy lights from the Tarpon Avenue up to the, uh. Pasco County Line last year. Uh, this year we'll get additional revenue, cover those additional costs, about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, there's also been additional lights put in the city too, around the city. I've had a large increase. Uh, we even talked about, uh, MLK in Safford Avenue got new lights in. We have the Zara, the cost about putting lights up on poles that didn't have lights before. Uh, Bay Shore had lights put on, uh, Florida Avenue and, uh, Gulf Road by the school, we had a number of lights put up. So some of those, those jumps just bump up a little bit for the initial, uh, installation of those lights, but then they should come down over time, uh, without any more lights.
Okay, that's great to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, let's see, the majority of the other items are enterprise fund questions I have, but I do want to reiterate, uh, I thought Vice Mayor Terpenny had a great comment about the insurances. Uh, that's something that I shop often myself, uh, for property insurance and flood insurance and also auto insurance. So I know that, uh, typically with the insurance companies, they'll give you a great rate to come in. And then after the handful of years, they'll do a steady increase, and then you look back and you're paying significantly more. So you have to go back and then shop it again, and then we'll get a good grade again, and then they'll increase again. So we just have to keep an eye out on that. So I support going out the bid for that as well. And to reiterate, uh, I think it's important that we, uh, definitely do the health insurance this year like it's been asked the past two years. That's all my questions right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commission done.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, real quick, before I, uh, kind of take the ball here, I just, uh, wanted to suggest to Commissioner Carr. Uh, I saw a, uh, email chain to the BOC the other day. I thought it was a great idea about, uh, a grant or a match, match program. Involving murals on the side of businesses. Is that something that you might consider, uh, for the code enforcement additional position or for code enforcement funds, uh, kind of expounding on that?
From a pub- public art standpoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got some ideas, um, that I have written down that I proposed actually to the Charter Committee, and they suggested that we probably look at it from a commission standpoint.
Okay.
Um, public art would be a, a great example of how we could use some additional funds because when you think of a code enforcement, they're going after blighted properly, properties typically. And the goal of code enforcement is get them within compliance of what the code says. So if you have a blighted property, you're able to collect funds from it via fines or whatever it may be. I think it would be advantageous or it makes sense for the city to go ahead and put it back into beautification somehow. How do you do that? It's taking care of your own property, beautification projects, public art, and then obviously taking care of our seniors is one of the most important things too. So it's a combination between multiple items. So I think I'll just add that to the list.
Yeah, definitely. I just thought it was a great idea.
Thank you.
Get that. Uh, before I get the ball rolling on my questions too, um, I felt a little guilty when I was going through the budget because. I was suggesting slashing certain things and I didn't have really any excuse or any solution as to how to get that money back. So I had some productive discussions with a few department heads, um, on how possibly we could generate more revenue for our general fund or, or some additional funds. Um, and kind of where I landed was our building permitting process, um, hasn't been touched in some time now. Uh, so if Director Powell, uh, could come up here and, uh, just had a couple of questions for you.
Good evening, Kevin Powell, Building Development Director.
Yeah, thank you very much for letting me annoy you as much as I do with my phone calls. Um, thanks for taking my questions and working with me on this. I really appreciate it. Uh, so it's my understanding right now that in, as far as our building permitting process goes, uh, it's, it might be a little bit overcomplicated. Um, and it hasn't been touched in some time. When's the last time we worked on or restructured our building permitting?
It was, uh, two thousand and three is when the last time they looked at the, uh, fees for the building department. And it's, uh, quite lengthy. Um, you know, it's something that I feel should be, uh. Fixed pricing instead of trying to figure out how many receptacles you have in a place and count them. And, you know, there's a dollar for this and five dollars for that, and this electrical service costs this much, but that one costs that much. I think it's something that we should really look at and, and, uh, reevaluate the, um, fees that we charge because, you know, we are a, a fee-based department. Uh, so what we're bringing in, you know, what does the general fund want to put into our department versus what we take in?
Yeah, thank you. And when I first heard about that, I was just kind of stunned because I feel like this is a great opportunity to simplify a process, not only for our residents. That are getting new developments or having their buildings be inspected, uh, but also simplify it for our staff. Because every time a staff member has to go out there and count up the outlets and that kind of thing, um, this would save a little bit of their employee time, uh, that they could spend doing something, uh, more productive. So I just wanted to kind of bounce that idea off the commission and, uh, our city manager and just see if that might be something willing, uh, we're willing to look at. And see if we could get, uh, some more money out of by simplifying it. Because with those fixed rates, we would save employee time from going out there and also it'd probably end up being a, a little bit of an increase. Is that something we'd be willing to do?
I think it's wise to, uh, look at every, uh, every progress, I mean, every process that we have to make sure that's updated. You know, I think it's a good idea to do that and with the feedback of, uh, Kevin and, uh, Mr. Licorice.
Commissioner, you're talking about the permitting process.
And, and pricing too.
Or, or the pricing or both?
Both.
Both.
So I thought we did, uh, uh, maybe it has been two thousand and thirteen, I don't know, but I thought that, uh, Anthony did something where he tried to streamline the process in terms of. Uh, like doing a lot of it online and I think Anthony had some initiative where inspectors were basically using tablets to sign off.
Yeah, it's just not on the fee. We just haven't touched.
Yeah, but the process we've worked on, but not the fee structure.
Yes.
The, the, the process was touched a little bit, not fully. Yes, the, the inspectors do have tablets in the field. There are other processes that we can do within the, the department to streamline it. Um, we're not there yet, something that we should probably look at. But our fee schedule there again was, has not been touched since two thousand and three.
Right.
We get a lot of people that tell us we're the cheapest game in town. Um, so it's something that we should, should, I, I think we should look at if that's the direction this commission wants to go. I'll definitely look at it and, and bring things to you. And then there again, look at, um, you know, having just fixed pricing on things, not trying to. You know, it's forty dollars for this, plus another five dollars for that, and then twenty dollars for this. It should just be a flat fee where you should be able to look at and say, this is what my permit's going to cost.
Right.
Yeah, Kevin, since we're speaking about these, the customer, uh, apply for an application online so you don't have to come here and, you know, present to do that, as we.
Right now, we don't have the ability to do that. Well, I've been looking at, um, uh, online plan review, which would. Enable contractors to submit all of that to us electronically. We talk about going paperless and.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, we, we take in reams of paper for a single permit instead of just bringing in it electronically. And then being able to have the ability to move that around electronically. That's something we should look at too. You know, if that's the direction we want to go, then, um, you know, that, that's where a lot of the departments are going to.
Uh, I was just wondering, Mr. Licorice, if we have the ability to do that with the, uh, system that we have in place?
Um, I don't believe so. I think it's going to be the cost.
No, there's going to be cost. There, I've, I've been looking, there, there is a cost to, to that, like everything. Uh, we're going to have to look at an upgrade and a cost into doing that.
Okay.
But again, within the review, he'd bring you with the fees and what, for instance, cost of that, I think something going to be somewhere eighty thousand, not somewhere ballpark or something. That's another case where, where with the fees that we'd be generating from updating the fees and, and making them simpler to phases. That may be something who, that could fund that when you're talking about the money and putting it back into there for the simplification. That would probably be all in the whole presentation that we would bring back to you, um, um, if, if that's what you'd like to see at a later time.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's going to take a little more time than, you know, by the next budget meeting, but it, it's something we can do during the course of, of the year, not something we necessarily have to, to budget right now. To bring back the whole package to you, and then you can look at all components of the package and, you know, go here, go there, um, or the board decides to go after looking at it. So I'm, I'm sure he's, he's, he'll be waiting for us to, to put that together to, to bring back to you if that's what you request.
I, I suggest that you get the IT department involved as well.
Yeah.
I, I have, uh, spoken with Suzanne on, uh, some of the, the programs. We, we've sat in on, um, teleconference on it and, and I believe the system does work for it. So we, we have been looking. So we, we have been looking into it. It's just if we can streamline the process and, uh, bring something in electronically. And pass it out to all the departments and they're being pinged with an email. We should be able to have our, our, um, plan review times taken down dramatically. You know, we, we bring a set of plans in and now we have to pass it off to other departments. And before it gets to us, it's, you know, two, three weeks, four weeks into the process before it even gets to the building department. So yeah, if that's where we want to go, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, start putting things together.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, Ron, isn't there somewhere in all of your budget documents where I think that one particular thing he's talking about is in the request but not funded, uh, area? Just sort of, you can also look again as we're looking at what projects we want to add, delete, change, millage rate. There's, there's a list of where some things that were asked for in the budget is not funded yet.
It's on, we call it standby. It's on standby right now. We had a e-plan review software, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we had budgeted. I'm not sure if that's still current. That's probably high, he says.
It's not budgeted, it's.
No, it's not in the budget.
Yes. But again, that's something his study that he's talking about could get all those figures refined and, and, and everything and we could bring back to the commission.
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I comment on this? Uh, so Kevin, if I understand that that's gonna help streamline the process potentially if you go electronic versus paper and could help get these applications there. Theoretically at a quicker rate.
Yeah, it, it, it would get it through in a quicker rate because we would be able to bring it in electronically and then we would pass it to every department electronically. During that process, we're able to, uh, set a timer on it where it's pinging them instead of, uh, paper plans going and sitting on a desk and getting buried. And then, you know, uh, two, three weeks later, you're calling over and you get the, oh, yeah, that, I, I've got that, you know, down here somewhere. So it would definitely streamline the process. And I know, I, I think a lot of goals for people are to try to go as much paperless as they can. We're bringing all that paper in. Now we have to scan it. Now we have to store it. You know, we, we've got to keep a commercial building for life of the building. So we have big rolls of plans. Or we have to put into the budget to scan those in electronically and store those electronically. So there, there's cost on, on either side of it. We want to try to get away from those costs where it comes in electronically and we're able to store it electronically.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think overall I would support something along those lines as well. And obviously the evaluation of the fees and how you can use staff at a wiser, uh, way with getting maybe the same amount of fees. I think I would support that as well. Just at least the valuation of it first.
Commissioner Donovan, you got something else that you want to add into that?
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much for answering those questions. I think we got good direction here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Yeah, sorry, sorry to derail it there, but I just think that's an opportunity to get some additional monies in. So the main thing that I'd like to see in the budget is possibly eliminating our local business taxes. Uh, many counties and cities have successfully repealed their local business tax and I believe that it's a win-win scenario for both business owners, residents and the city. Uh, eliminating our local business tax creates a welcoming atmosphere for small business, saving owners headache. And additionally, a few hundred dollars, uh, depending on what type of business they own. Uh, also it's a free market and I don't know if, uh, a local business tax is really justifiable from a principal perspective. Uh, I want to let consumers and the residents of Tarpon Springs decide who has the privilege of doing business here. And, uh, not our local government based on, you know, which type of business they might own. Uh, on the city side, preparing and mailing local business tax receipts wastes employee time and costs the city, uh, additional expenses for mailing and postage to get them their business tax receipt. Also, the taxes we're gaining from our local business tax or the revenue we're gaining, excuse me. Uh, it's budgeted to generate less than a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, uh, this upcoming year for our general fund revenue. So I just don't really think that less than a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars is worth hassling our, our business owners with. I think it would create a, a much better atmosphere. And again, I believe that we can make up the hundred and forty-five thousand dollars by getting flexible by looking at restructuring certain things, just like the permitting process. But I believe that eliminating the local business tax would be the best thing for our local business owners. And it would make it a lot easier to do business here in Tarpon Springs. So it'd even create a more welcoming environment. And even Pinellas County has done this. So if you create a business outside of, you know, a, uh, a, a city area. The, the county actually has done this with pretty, pretty good success. So I just wanted to bounce that idea off you guys and if you guys got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Did you say this is a hundred and forty-five thousand a year?
Uh, yeah, sorry. If you guys want to turn to page fifty-eight in your executive summary, it should be right there. And Ron, you can confirm this, uh, or correct me, but I see on page fifty-eight kind of towards the middle, uh, local business taxes. The budgeted twenty twenty is a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five.
Correct.
It's one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six fifty. There are some other things within that, uh, yard sale licenses and penalties right within there.
Okay, so even less. Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, so I just want to get your guys' perspective on that. Uh, I think it's a good opportunity to show our, our small business owners here in Tarpon that we care about them. We're here for them. And, and also it, it, you know, we don't have an employee dedicated to business tax receipts. So every time they gotta go through a business tax receipt, uh, process. That's just taken away from another employee's standard time where they could be working on something again, more productive. Really, I, I think it's just a hassle for business owners and I don't really know if that's our city's role is, you know, to tell businesses based on their type, uh, yeah, you have this much money as the privilege of doing business here within our city. I think, you know, it is a privilege to do business here in the city, but let the consumers decide who's gonna do business here in the city. So what are your thoughts on this?
I'm, I'm not really sure, but doing that, I'm, of course you're gonna create a vacuum on, you know, you're gonna be short of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. But also, how are you gonna get track of all the businesses when they, they come to town?
There can still be a business registration process or there can still be a notification process. Uh, it, and again, this isn't something that's completely irregular. Pinellas County does it as a county. Multiple cities do it, uh, within the Tampa Bay area. It's, it's not something that's completely foreign. It's not something I'm just randomly introducing. It's, it's just been done in the past in different areas. And it's, it's been proven to help their local business economy.
Um, yeah, I'll give you some, uh, feedback, Commissioner. Generally for me, in my experience and, and given, uh, you know, incentives or breaks or something like this, this would be something that I would be more so, uh, able to support. If we were like in more of a down market as an incentive. But I mean, for a local business tax for a hundred and twenty-five bucks to have a license. And, you know, in some cases it's a hundred and twenty-five or whatever the case may be. I don't think that that's that cumbersome, uh, to a business right now. And I don't think that I would do without the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars or, you know, roughly whatever the case is. And then, you know, to your, to a point that you just made in terms of the staff time or whatever it, you know, costs us to generate that hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. As it relates to issuing the receipt or sending out the postage or whatever. If you're still gonna have a business registration and you're still gonna have that correspondence, you're still gonna absorb some form of cost as it relates to keeping track of those businesses or logging them or whatever. So I would be interested to know if Pinellas County or these other municipalities still have waived that business tax? Or if that's something that they did, you know, in a few years ago. Saw incentives like this, uh, Hernando County at one point waved like their impact fees, right? During the down market, now they've brought them back. So I mean, to me, if we were, you know, if it was two thousand eight or two thousand nine, I'd be like, yeah, absolutely. We need, you know, all the businesses that we can get. So if it, you know, if we can help them by waiving that business tax, then let's do it. But I don't think that now, you know, I don't thi- I mean, while I'm all about incentives to businesses, I don't think that I would be willing to do without that, you know, plus hundred thousand dollars, uh, right now. That's just my opinion.
Uh, I would just need some more information on this one. I'm not ready to jump and support this one fully yet. Uh, I do want to, uh, acknowledge you though. I mean, these are some great ideas that you're bringing up that I haven't heard over the past couple of years yet. So thank you for looking at it at a different perspective and making some great recommendations. But this one right now, I'm not, I'm not there yet. So I, I would need some more further information on the idea, uh, behind it. So, not yet.
And again, just a thought, if you do the millage rate decrease and you do that, you're talking about removing two hundred and twenty-nine thousand from this budget. So that's what, all these things you have to do in order to do, you have to put that into fact. Now you gotta go into this budget and you gotta take that money out. If, if you do the ninety thousand for the one and you do this one, so now we're close to the two hundred and thirty thousand. So when you come with these reductions, we're gonna have to come back the nineteenth of our budget time and see what are we not doing within this budget to go along with that?
Again, I, I appreciate the, uh, the idea and I appreciate you bringing forward. I am more interested to give a break to the, uh, every resident in Tarpon Springs, not just to the, uh, sort of business people.
Yeah, and again, I still, I still.
Look at that and see.
Yeah, it, it is definitely the same mindset as the decrease of the, of the millage rate. I mean, again, I know for certain businesses, it's just over a hundred dollars. But what business doesn't want just over a hundred dollars? And also, you know, the, the non-hassle of not having to register their business based on, you know, whatever type of business they may be. But again, uh, I'll get more information for you guys. I'll send it out in the email. But also just keep in mind, you know, it's that same mindset as the millage rate. Yeah, we're reducing something. Yeah, we gotta make that money up somewhere. But really it's just trying to make just like the residents' lives easier. It's trying to make it easier to do business in our town.
That's good, but you cannot keep adding to that same thing. You know, uh, right now we're talking about reducing the millage. Let's work on that and perhaps we can look at that next year.
Okay, so do you guys want more information on this or no? Do you want it to die?
I will be more interested for next year than it is for this year, in my opinion, since we are discussing about reducing the millage.
I'll evaluate anything. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm up for evaluating anything and turning over every rock. So addition, I'm never turning away additional information as Mark knows.
You know my thoughts. I'm out for now.
Okay. I won't waste my time with it then, but I, I do think it'd be good to draw a line then somewhere. In terms of what, you know, what amount of money are we willing to sacrifice for cuts in costs, cuts in taxpayer? I mean, when, where, where do we draw that line, you know? Because we're fine with doing it for the millage rate, but then, you know, once, once we add all that together, that's too much, that's fine. But it would be nice to have kind of a ballpark figure of, of where we're gonna draw the line for each budget. All right, now onto my, my questions. So, thanks guys for bearing with me. My next point is I, I, I would just ask that in this budget, uh, five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. To make the entryway a little bit more, uh, welcoming for residents coming into City Hall. I, I know a couple of months ago, we had a city accessibility, uh, topic be brought up. It seemed like we kind of reached, uh, an agreement at the end there that maybe we could be a little bit more welcoming for our residents. So I think even if it's just a few hundred dollars to, you know, get a help desk sign in there, maybe put some local artwork in there. Put a, a bench in there so they can wait in there instead of having to bother the building department if they have to sit down and wait for somebody.
We're actually looking at, now with money within this budget we have this year, we're looking at some of those i- ideas to do some of that. So if, 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 if we don't, because I'm, I'm thinking we have some to do it this year. But if we get to the twelfth and I think we don't, um, or we got most of it and we need to add a thousand or something. But we are looking for that, those features to do within this budget we have now, um, before this one. So.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, that, that's just something super little, but I think it'll make a big difference. Also, uh, Mr. City Manager, I just want to get an update, um, and kind of bounce this off you. I, I know the commission was approached recently by, I think, uh, Turn the Tides for Tarpon regarding, uh, Sustainability Manager. Uh, some cities have been hiring them, uh, in our area. And it was my understanding that, uh, the city was gonna kind of wait for the Sustainability Committee to get up and running before we, we looked at moving further with it. And then maybe there were some additional positions from, you know, various departments in the future that had already been kind of allotted their, their slot. Kind of on a waiting list of when new positions were gonna be created. So that's, that's just what I thought for now, but I just wanted to get a quick update on that.
Again, and, and, you know, we haven't got to the cut list yet and we may get that within personnel. Yes, there's our, our probably two or three positions that we could really use in this budget that we're probably not gonna be able to fund within this budget. But on the idea of the sustainability person and stuff, the idea was to get the, the Sustainability Committee up and running. Despite what everybody says, we do have a sustainability person. That person is Paul Smith and all of his experience. So we do have a person that is doing those things. Now to get somebody to assist them or form, in fact, you know, it may run eventually into one of those. But we'd like to get that up going. Again, there's a position, again, to assist in, in, in a couple of other places that we're looking to see how this budget. But, you know, in the course of doing this budget lasts several months, I'm telling some people on some essential positions that we probably need that we probably have to wait. We probably can't get them into this budget year. So putting that above them unless, you know, there's something else going on. But that was the intention, get up, have that committee working with Paul Smith. With again, other resources from within the city that'll assist Paul Smith as he needs it. Bob Robertson, some other ones with some of these sustainability's projects. I think we should look at that first, see how that goes. And if that issues to come up, uh, earliest it would come up in the next budget season, not, not this one. As we look at that one and the additional positions and then weigh those out. Here are the three or four we need in the priority and look at that. But I, I just within, within what we're trying to fund and all we're trying to do in this budget as you see as we're balancing this. You know, I just don't see the place for it in this budget this year.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get an update on it for the public or anybody watching. If you guys want to go to page thirty-five in your executive summary, uh, real quick, I just had a quick question.
In the smaller book?
Yeah, that's the smaller book. It's, uh, this one. Uh, if you guys look on page thirty-five, I just wanted to know, um, our grant, our grant funds or our, our revenue summary. Uh, I just want to know why there were, there were some decreased expectations. Um, I know I was really excited about the grant committee, the internal grant committee being formed. I, I was pleased to see, um, you know, the grant calendar being made. I was getting really excited about it. I just want to know if this is just kind of a ballpark figure or why our, our expectations are kind of tempered to, uh, to go down a little bit actually for grant funds we receive this next, uh, budget season. And I, I don't know if wrong or, uh.
Probably wrong.
Thanks.
He's very conservative.
Yeah, sometimes I, you know, I loosen it up a little bit. Uh, the grant funding you're talking about, another, uh, or two thousand twenty?
Yeah, the just.
Most of that's a safer grant right now. A hundred and forty-four thousand and the two hundred and seventy-three thousand is a transfer coming in from the general fund to cover that sixty-five percent for the safer grant.
Okay, so is this just something that fluctuates throughout the year? I mean, if we can get a grant, great, it'll increase?
You know, I think another fifty, uh, we've got another, uh, well, we got some recycling grant that comes in about eighteen thousand every year. We used to, I don't think we're getting the NE, we used to get an NEA grant. I don't think we're getting that. But that's mostly, it's mostly the safer grant and recycling grant, the current ones.
Hey, this, these are the grants you actually know about and friends that we're going after and get a one point six million stormwater. You wouldn't be anticipating those ones. You just anticipate in the, the grant funds that we pretty much know we're getting.
The stormwater, the one point three million, that's in the stormwater fund, that grant.
Okay, all right.
These aren't, these are grants that just aren't, you know, can be put in, you know, pegged in the other funds like stormwater.
Thank you, yeah.
But yes, our goal with that committee, as you said, and what we're going, as you see as we've got started, is to get that number up as high as we can get it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
But until it's a known or we're able to give something, he wouldn't necessarily put it in here as anticipating it just because we're gonna apply for a bunch of them. But we plan to, and again, we plan to try to get that number as high as we can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and then if you guys want to turn to page forty-two, um, I just had a quick question here. Maybe, maybe it is a simple answer. I just wanted to know, uh, in terms of our expenditures, uh, the aid that we're giving. Uh, we're given less aid right, uh, in, in this upcoming budget. We're given less aid than we have in every other year that's listed on here. I just wanted to know why the substantial decrease in aid we're giving or, or maybe it's from a different fund or from a different place.
You say page forty-two?
Yeah, page forty-two.
Line eighty-two and eighty-three.
Aid to private organizations and other grants and aids.
I could try to get back with you on that. I'm not sure exactly which ones are falling into that category right there, but I can get back with you on what, you know, what's in those aid categories.
Okay, yeah, and just for the record, yeah, I mean, the past few years, I mean, we had budgeted one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen thousand.
I'm sorry, I don't know what it is. It's a CRA. We budget a little bit less for the facade grants.
Okay.
I know it'd come to me sooner or later here, man.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, I wasn't missing something there.
What page was that?
Page forty-two.
Forty-two. Forty-two.
Can I ask a clarifying question real quick? So that doesn't talk about like the organizations that the city donates money to, right? Or is like the um Safe Harbor or some of the other organizations, does that fall in that same category?
Does that fall in the AIDS to private organization, cause I know.
Yes.
It used to be every year, it used to be ten thousand, but last, but we did not fund the homeless leadership network, which was five thousand. I'm not sure where that other three thousand eight hundred and fifty-two came from, because uh.
Yeah, the Safe Harbor falls under that point eighty-three, the grants and aids.
Yeah, I just don't know where the, I know five thousand of it's Safe Harbor, but I don't know where the other thirty-eight fifty-two comes from.
I guess the majority of that's the facade grants in the CRA fund.
In the AIDS to private organization lines, eighty-three I'm talking about.
Well, we had that one amount for eight thousand eight hundred dollars in two thousand eight, that was dealing with uh what was donation money for. There was a, I I think, a child that was going through some issues and stuff, and the money was raised, and that's where we paid that out, if that's what you're talking about.
So that's why you showed it there.
Yeah.
For accounting purposes.
We got together, they raised some money for this child, I think it was part of the fire department and stuff.
Okay, oh, oh, that's okay. But it's in there because for your accounting purposes, it's not like we spent, the money has to go in and then go out, so that's why, okay.
Uh and then lastly, I just wanted to see if we had any updates on the possibility or any quotes of uh new website. Or um, you know, I I know on page sixty-seven, we see our, thankfully, our our IT um expenses are are increasing. So our IT department is getting more responsibilities, it's it's growing, that's awesome.
We're working on that right now.
Okay. And are are we also just, are we bouncing it around if maybe our, we could do it internally with our own IT department?
Internally, um getting us, getting some kind of assistance on a smaller scale or also getting somebody to come in and do it. Um we also want you to look at some facets of the new Explore Tarpon website to come in, what you like about that, what you don't, because the forum. And we did that very inexpensively with a group that just assists us forming it. Um but we're looking at all three of those, if we, you know, what we can do in the house, what we can do with a little assistance. You know, in the ten fifteen thousand area of somebody helping us build and and get to the points where you talked about doing. Or if it's the thing, we've just got too much information to put in and stuff, we just have to bite the bull and then go out and get one. We're looking at all three of those aspects and studying those right now to bring back to you.
Thank you, um and then actually, sorry, this is my last thing, uh if you guys open up your binder just to page six. In the big binder. Uh I just noticed on line forty, it said travel per diem uh for the Board of Commission, travel to historic preservation, legislative events. And other conferences, and it was two thousand uh two thousand dollars. I I just wanted to know what happens when when this money doesn't get spent, or or maybe maybe it was all spent last year on a previous budget. Um I I just wanna know what happens to any of this money as far as our commission travel per diems that don't get spent, where does that money go? Does it go back to the general fund or?
It it goes, for instance, when you're looking for money, for instance, to do the hallware stuff and there's extra money available and you know, there's something that's been. I don't know if Ron can figure what we're talking about, but any of these categories is when we're at the end of the budget is now, and I'm looking for money for either signs. Or for for additional money to do those things in the lobby, that's why I why I say this is the time we can look, okay. We know there's no conferences here, or we know this money's not three thou- you know, three thousand here, or two thousand there, or three thousand there. I've got five thousand to do a renovation or do a sign or do something like that. So usually at the end of a budget, that's where you look for to do some of those projects that. Um you know, the list that we've talked about, the list that we have of projects that we wanna do beautifully, and those kind of things, we'll look and try to do it, but. I don't know on their on their travel money and stuff, I think most of that is, I don't think we get much at the end of the year for that, for their. For for that particular category on the city commission travel.
Are you talking about if there's money left over in that in that line?
From our per diem, just wondering if we don't spend that two grand we had allotted there, um but I I think it got answered, just that that's where we'd use for any.
If you don't spend it, but it's not used somewhere else within the department, it goes back into unassigned fund balance?
And that's for all funds, right? I mean, that's all, all the budget that we're looking at, it goes back if it's not used.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, alright, I'm I'm good on that.
For instance, when when there's been, for instance, coming up the Florida League of Cities, a lot of times, there's only one go. But I think last year or the year before, we ended up having three going, three commissioners going to it, which was for the first time. Well, we went way over in that budget, so that's where you took some of the budget on the other lines and stuff, where you found that they're not gonna spend money here or somewhere else. Um because, you know, three commissioners went, which which is good, you know, if everybody could go. Um but that line fell way short, so you look for one of those areas where you didn't spend the money, and then that goes and balances for there. For the travel or something that comes up.
Okay, thank you, that's it for me.
That's it. Well, that finishes the uh.
I had a couple of things, Mayor.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Uh just in flipping through it, kind of refresh my memory on some things. Uh historically, the vacant positions have uh have always kind of stuck out to me in terms of, and as we're trying to balance this budget. And I know that, you know, vacant employee positions, in some cases, they're vacant and they need to be filled, or they're vacant and we just haven't found a qualified person or whatever. But just, you know, and briefly flipping through, for example, in the uh in the library, we have two vacant positions. Now, I don't I don't know that they don't need to be filled, I'm just saying they're vacant and they total somewhere around, you know, I don't know, sixty thousand dollars. So that's just in the library, so, you know, moving forward as we're as we're figuring out whether or not we need to find ninety thousand, a hundred, a hundred and twenty, whatever the case may be. You know, some of these vacant positions, to me, unless it's an essential position that needs to get filled, is a great way to try and come up with some of that money. So I wanted to throw that out there, um.
Yeah, remember, we need to give you an updated list too, because when he prints that, if somebody's not in a position, if we're advertising or we're two days from hiring. If when he does that, it's gonna show vacant, even though the person.
Well, that's my point.
So, yeah, we need to get you that updated of.
Right.
Cause some of those might have already been filled.
In our next meeting, a a list of vacant positions, how long they've been vacant, and if they're essential or not. If they're not essential, then wipe them out of the budget and we come up with some extra money.
Right.
Um and then I saw twenty-seven thousand dollars in sponsorships, and I was curious what that's for, what we sponsor that costs twenty-seven thousand dollars.
If that's a sponsorship, we getting for cultural, and I know Diane's been doing a great job of getting sponsorships for the performances and that. Uh going out to like Advent, Advent Health, yeah, getting money in.
We're anticipating that we're gonna get it from a sponsorship, that's not always a figure, we hope we hope to get that.
We're getting the money in, coming.
And uh in roads and streets, I saw that there's uh nine thousand dollars in crushed concrete. My question would just be, I'm pretty sure we have a stockpile of crushed crushed concrete at the waste yard facility, no Tom?
It might be a Tom question.
Yeah, he's he's the crushed concrete now.
Not to mention in projects that we do, we have a supply from our own recycling of crushed crushed concrete, so I'm curious why we're budgeting nine grand for that.
Well, we, well, crushed concrete is a is a product that we use all the time, we don't have it actually stockpiled at the yard waste. When you see it, the yard waste is actually uh uh roof shingles, uh ceramic roof shingles we use for the roadway out there. Uh but crushed concrete is a product product that we have to purchase.
Do we?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha, but we do, when we do a project and we bust concrete up, we obviously recycle it for our own use, right?
Well, we send it to a recycling plant, we send it, uh we don't have the the capability of actually crushing and turning it into into a fine aggregate. Uh so we actually just send it back to a plant and then purchase it back.
Finer aggregate, not just material, crushed concrete material that we would use for like shoreline stables.
Right, we will say some of our cro- our broken concrete for shoreline uh repairs, but most of it goes back and gets recycled, crushed back down and used for other purposes like road base.
Finer material, not just big junk.
Right.
Gotcha.
Right.
Uh and then I saw we got a couple of grand for flowers and plants for shrubs and stuff within the CRA. I'm just curious why we don't try and uh get that two grand out of the uh tree or the tree fund?
Uh well, I believe I believe we're prohibited from doing it from the tree fund.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which is in order, and that could be subject for change in the future, if that was so the case of of the wishes of the commission.
Not a bad idea to forget, though.
Yeah, I mean, we've, I mean, in recent history, we've kind of flirted with like, hmm, can we use tree, I mean, if we had a half a million bucks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've got quite a bit of money there, just sitting there, yeah. Should look at it.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I make one comment, just for the record?
Yeah.
Uh I just wanna point out, and it's a reminder every year, that uh if you have an opportunity to buy gasoline in the city of Tarpon Springs. I would encourage you to buy gasoline in the city of Tarpon Springs. The city receives a small tax for fuel tax, so if you're fueling in Pasco, you're fueling in Palm Harbor, you're fueling other areas. The city of Tarpon Springs doesn't get that tax, so by refueling your vehicle in the city of Tarpon Springs, we receive revenue from that, so I would encourage residents to do that.
Good commercial.
Yeah.
We're on the bus.
We want the money to come here.
Yes. Okay, that finishes up the general fund and we go to uh enterprise fund. The first uh. Let's start with the sanitation, which is the smallest one, one of the smallest one. Um the only question that I have is, uh we're getting close to uh. The uh the the agreement that we have with the waste manager to expire, is that correct? And are we getting getting ready for negotiations for that?
Uh two more, two more years.
Oh, two more years, so we're good for two more years.
We got a little room, yes.
Okay. I really don't have any any other questions, uh any uh?
Uh yeah, I got a quick question, uh page two twelve of the binder. Under miscellaneous, it says interest on investment, uh the actuals for two thousand eighteen was seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Two thousand nineteen budgeted was uh fifty-five hundred, and in twenty twenty, we're going to twenty-five thousand, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a rotten one.
That's a rotten one, yeah.
I wouldn't expect that you'd answer that one.
We're in the san- in the sanitation fund there?
Yeah, sanitation, page two twelve of the binder.
Yeah, I was budgeting based on the increase, the the way the rates have been increasing based on the three percent. You know, sometimes I might be revisiting that to see how the rates go, especially when the Fed meets at the end of this month, but yeah, it had increased the rates. You know, we're obviously, we're trying to get as much interest earnings as possible, trying to leave as little in the checking accounts, leaving enough there. But trying to make sure we've got the money invested, not just that does, not just sitting around in the checking account.
So in between last year and this year, you've reinvested the money in in a different manner?
Yes.
Gotcha, good for you. Um on your handout, page thirty-three, uh it says city administrative fee is twenty percent. I was hoping you could elaborate on that and what that means.
Yeah, that's a, that's a twenty percent that's added on to the contractor rate for the, on the contractors. It's to cover the uh solid waste employees, we got about five employees in the solid waste department. Also to uh help cover the recycling department, the expenses and the operating expenses in there.
So you're saying this twenty percent comes from the general fund to help fund the sanitation, is that right?
No, this is on the sanitation fees that go out to the customers for refuse and recycling. On top of the contractor rate, twenty percent is added on to the contractor rate in the customer's bills.
So the twenty percent is a fee that we collect?
The city collects it, yes.
For admin fees, is that right?
Yes, to help for the operations.
Okay. I'm good.
Is this specifically for stormwater, or I mean sanitation?
Sanitation.
Okay, um if we could talk about real quick, it has a one point seven eight percent increase on one of the pages in the presentation, Ron. I believe uh thirty-three, mentioned a couple of times, I believe. The one point seven eight, is that the contractual increase?
Yes, per the contract with waste management, they go up per by based on the consumer price index. And so when we figure it out based on that, it this year, or for next year, it's coming in at one point seven eight percent, based on the contract.
Okay, thank you, also, uh recycling, I brought this up in years past, um a little bucket that we, as residents, receive. Uh part of being a city resident, I I mean, it's it's just, I think there's so much recycling that's being used now. That it's not actually, the people that are recycling, there's multiple buckets, it's overfilling. Um I think it would be best for the city to look at some avenues to actually have a larger bucket for recycling, if we're gonna be providing buckets. Maybe we stop providing them, I don't know, uh but they're they're a tripping hazard, you gotta bend over, hurt your back, pick them up and stuff like that, so. Um sometimes I have more recycling than trash out at the curb and almost need a reverse uh of the buckets. Just wanna bring up at that point, um secondly, I I've talked to the city manager about this as a an item. Um so some people might not be aware, but um sanitation obviously goes back for many, many years. We've had trash where historic homes, you dig around historic homes, you might find old bottles, you might find old tents where people would bury their trash. Or maybe they'll burn it in the backyard, um and then the city of Tarpon Springs actually had their own dump, uh where the current waste yard is today. Um and that's just a bunch of green land, there's some trees out there as well, it's not being used really other than. A small portion of it's being used for the yard waste facility. Um and talking about revenues and some of the other aspects, it's thinking, how do we create more revenue for the city of Tarpon Springs? And one of the discussions was, I I know there's been some discussions about putting a ball field on this area, and there's some other things that need to be done, which I'm in support of that as well. But this might be an alternative idea to look at as well, is looking at a solar panel field um as a as a using this space. So it's a a big space, it's not being used really for anything other than a small portion of it. Um you can't really build on it because of the old history of the property. Um and then if we could sell the electricity back to Duke Energy, it could be an opportunity to create a revenue stream for the city. That the city doesn't have today with the renewable resources moving forward into the future, so I'd like to make that recommendation within the sanitation fund. Um that could be an opportunity to use um to create some revenue in the sanitation side. And that could help alleviate some of the collections as well, cost-wise, if so be.
I think the one of the things to look on, look at for that commissioner is the uh, I think in order, and just in talking with Paul Smith about the uh solar panels. And how to try and better utilize that is you have to be within a certain distance to the grid to get the power to the power plant, is that right, Paul? Is that feasible from the?
If if you, if may, Vice Mayor, I was talking to a uh solar panel company, and it said, as long as you have a um a building that. Um has a meter at it, so there would be the building where the warehouse is, it has a meter, you could put it back into the grid. For Duke Energy, and that's when I talked to a consultant or a a local company about it, cause I inquired about it, he said, all you have to have is a a building. That pulls electricity, so it would be the weight house that has the electricity going to the um the weight house, and I don't know how much it is a year. Probably less than a couple thousand dollars, um but then it could go back through that meter.
From the warehouse?
Yeah.
Is that your understanding, Paul?
Well, there's a lot of considerations, it's a great idea, um there's also a capacity consideration, you know, working with Duke Energy. The limit for most contracts is two megawatts, and I think if you were to really do that right, you could really put out more than that. So it'd put us into an uncharted territory, we'd really have to talk it out with them and see if they'd want to net meter with us. Cause that's what we'd have to do, is get it back into the grid, they'd have to agree to it. So there'd need to be a lot of stuff worked out, we'd have to also look at when we're penetrating that cap out there. That's designed to prevent the groundwater from getting into the old waste in the landfill, there's a lot of considerations there. I know we're getting close to the end of its closure period, so we'd have to work with DEP to see if they think it's safe to put. You know, the the things that hold the panels up, you have to drive them into the ground.
Sure.
And that's considering penetrating that clay cap that's out there, so um it's a great idea. I mean, there's really a lot of benefits to it, but just a lot of things we'd have to work through. I think the capital cost would be pretty significant, too, I I've looked at some case studies. And some of the larger ones on brownfield sites, contaminated sites, I mean, these are ten plus million dollar projects, so. We're we're talking pretty big numbers, um has some great benefit potential.
I I I believe it's a great idea also, but uh Mister Smith, um I remember, if I remember correctly. The area that uh we're talking about has been capped and gas, we cannot drill on there. Because gases will escape into the atmosphere if I'm right?
Yes, and we we do.
Be careful with that.
Monitor it every year, um it is getting the, towards the end of its monitoring period, but I just don't know the details of what that all means. Does it release us from any of those concerns anymore or not? I think we'd still have to deal with it.
Looking at it, and being that we're using a special air like this, I wonder if there's any grant available that can help us with that. You know, from the from the federal government, so it's worth a looking at it.
Yeah.
Any other uh suggestion?
That's it for sanitation.
Okay. Commissioner Donald?
Uh yeah, I just had one quick one, um in twenty eighteen, the budget accounted for um some some revenue expenses, whatever. Thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars from intergovernmental revenue. Um I just wanna know what that was, what's that from? I don't know who I'm asking here, I probably wrong. It's on page, it's on page seventy-nine. And it's just that twenty eighteen revenue that says intergovernmental, and no other year has any intergovernmental revenue, so I just wanna know what that was from and if we could ever get that again.
Seventy-nine?
No, seventy-nine.
Well, you're stumping me on that one.
Sorry, sorry, I know, I plucked a. Sorry, sorry, I know, I plucked a random number off the page, you can just email me about it if you'd like.
Hurricane Irma. That's a portion for this, we did get something.
Okay.
You almost stumped, come on, this is stump Ron, we gotta stump him.
Okay, that's, that's my only question for that, thank you.
Okay, so that takes care of the sanitation. And now we'll go to the water and sewer. Well, the total revenue on that is twenty million dollars, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, Ron. Three million, two, two hundred and sixteen thousand comes from non-revenue reserves. Would you please explain what this fund is from?
Yeah, that, that is money that's coming from reserves that handle the capital projects. And the water and sewer fund, it's, it's based on the rate study that we have done, that was planned on, that we'd be using these reserves, you know, from the water and sewer fund.
So what do we do, we just transfer it every year into the account?
Well, it's, it's basically money that's in the, in the, in the reserves, it's savings, if you wanna call it, that's gonna be used for the capital projects.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Uh, yeah, thank you, I just wanted to detail a little bit more for the record, and Ron, I think this would be for you. When we first met, I, I had a lot of questions about it, you put my mind at ease about it, at least more than it was. Just the debt regarding the, the plant, I just wanted to verify, it's roughly two million dollars a year, every year until we pay it off, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. 'Cause I just see, I, I know it was a million, and then a million, it looks like in twenty eighteen, but now it, it jumps-
It's about two million forty thousand a year for-
So, so now it's just gonna be pretty much roughly two million from here and-
Yep.
Until, I, I don't know the math on that, what is it, like thirty years left, or?
Six million, about six million left that goes through two thousand thirty-eight, and the balance, about six million, about twenty, twenty-six million goes through two thousand forty-two.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two parts of the bond issue.
Okay. That's my only question for that one, I just wanted to ask that, thank you.
Where, are we on sanitation still?
No, we're on water and sewer.
Water and sewer, alright. Have you spoke yet?
Not yet.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Paul, you mentioned something when we talked about the general funds, about peak versus non-peak usage of electricity at the water plant. Can you touch on this a little bit further and let me know about if the city tries to pump or clean water during non, non-peak hours, or if this is being, I imagine it is with you being in charge, but I just wanted to double check that that's the strategic approach that was being taken.
Yeah, we have most of our staffing during the daytime, and we wanna be staffing that facility while we're operating the RO process, so that really drives the daytime operation. We have looked at the rates, and we actually consult with Duke to find the most cost-effective schedule to do that. So we are working on that, and that's something that changes, you know, we reevaluate that each year. So sure answer is yes, we're looking for the lowest-cost way to produce it, but we are sort of constrained by needing to be manning that facility or staffing that facility when that part of the process is happening.
Okay, that's something we could look at, as a city, or the city could look at staffing during night hours if we need to as well, right? If there, if it's beneficial in that aspect from a budget standpoint?
Yes, but that would be a major personnel consideration to move basically the majority of the staff to nighttime.
Okay. I think it's good to continue to evaluate this from a cost perspective overall. Is the, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but is the sewer line and water line replacement, that's gonna be in one of the capital projects next, next meeting? Probably, okay. I did actually, I have one other question for stormwater, too, I forgot to ask. Okay, so this is a, a topic that, it pertains to stormwater, it pertains to water, it pertains to sanitation. So there's administration fees that is scheduled each year to go from these enterprise funds and paid into the general fund. And I believe the description is to, in the previous budget summaries, the description has been to cover HR services, roadway usage, management services, et cetera. And I don't have the exact cost of this year on where we're at from a proposal standpoint. But Ron, is that something you could share from the past couple of years, you having those numbers handy by chance? It's the administration charge or administration fees from enterprise funds to the general funds, and you, you mentioned something along the lines that the marina and the golf course were eliminated this budget year.
Correct, and the, the ones we'll have is from the water sewer fund, the sanitation fund, and the stormwater fund.
Right, so in years past, I mean, it's gone up significantly this year, I believe, right? It's close to nine hundred thousand dollars.
This is where you give, for instance, the presentation we did in four different budgets.
Yeah, I got the presentation loaded here if you want, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I think it's very important for us to understand how you got that, how we're looking at what the average was of the other cities, how we didn't wanna put that all in one year on them, so you kinda spaced it to, because it's a very good process that you used to not, to not go to what the standard is for all the other cities, that you progressively got to where you are this upcoming year with the eight percent. I think that's something good for the public to put that presentation up, for the public and everybody to see the thought process you did in to get us to the point of, of what the normal administrative fees on, and how you didn't put it all on in that first year, and you progressed to get to the point where now we're on the lower end of the average of what the other cities do for that. So I think that's a good story for the commission and for the public to, to see.
Yeah, we've got, as you mentioned, administrative fees from the enterprise funds to the, back to the general fund. The basic operation of it is account for operations that are financed, operate in a manner similar to enterprise funds, account for operations that are financed in an operating manner similar to private, private business enterprises, where the intended governing bodies will recover all the costs, expenses, depreciation of providing goods and services to the, to the general public, finance on a cost recovery. That, you know, the enterprise funds operate like a business, not like the general fund, they're basically more on a cash basis, no capital, no depreciation. All costs of the enterprise funds must be captured in order to reflect a true cost enterprise. All costs enterprise funds, including admin charges, are approved as part of the budget process. Enterprise funds have no staff allocated for administrative management functions, they are all in the general fund. To charge the enterprise funds for admin charges of, of the general fund, an allocation is performed, which expenses these charges to the enterprise funds, that's these transfers that we do from the enterprise funds. The methodology for allocating the admin, admin charges is as a percentage of revenues of the enterprise funds. This allocation methodology is a widely accepted practice of municipalities following generally accepted accounting principles. Admin charges of enterprise funds budgeted in the general fund, what are they covering? Purchasing does work, finance, payroll, accounts payable, finance. HR, all employee services from hiring, retirement, all benefit coordination in employees. IT, all computer equipment, software, maintenance, operations, support. The board and city manager for their management services related to the enterprise funds. Building development for permitting, impact fees, planning for all the planning services they provide. City attorney for legal issues, legal issues. Facility maintenance for maintenance of the buildings of the enterprise funds. Parks and parkways for maintenance of the grounds. Roads and streets for maintenance of roads, sidewalks of the enterprise funds. And police and fire for all police and fire services provided to the enterprise funds. The city has five enterprise funds, as you know, the water and sewer, sanitation, stormwater fund are the ones that were allocating the administrative charge. The funds not compensating the general fund due to the financial constraints of that, of those funds are the marina and the golf course fund, which was compensating through two thousand nineteen. Like I say, two thousand twenty is the first year we're discontinuing that, that admin charge. The history of the admin charges to the enterprise funds, up through two thousand seventeen, it was a flat amount and did not change except for the golf course fund. Water and sewer fund was at six hundred and twenty thousand, or three point six four percent of revenues. Sanitation fund was at, at that time was two hundred and six thousand, or four point one four percent. Stormwater fund was a hundred and fourteen thousand, or seven point five three percent, and golf course fund was a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven forty, or nine point four two percent. The amount was two hundred and seventy-five thousand from the golf course. Really, that goes back to when they used to lease out the golf course, and that was the lease payment to the golf course fund. But we, like I say, we gradually have decreased that due to the financial constraints of the golf course fund. In two thousand seventeen, it was brought to my attention by our auditors that the compensation from the enterprise funds was especially, especially the water and sewer and sanitation funds was low. I performed my own analysis by using the number of employees in the enterprise funds compared to the total city employees, then using no number, those numbers and applying them to the budgets of the general fund departments where those employees are that provide those services to the enterprise funds. My own analysis came up with an average of eight percent should be allocated for admin charges, which was higher when compared to the current rate of, we, we were only getting the three point six four percent and four point one four percent mentioned on the previous slide. At the same time I completed my study, our auditors informed me that the city of Dunedin had performed a similar survey of the cities in Pinellas County and certain cities of similar size outside of Pinellas County. The result of Dunedin's survey, survey was eight percent, they came up with the same I have. It was decided we need to adjust the charge for admin charges to the enterprise funds. The belief was they needed to be consistent, as you can see before, they varied from three percent to nine percent to the golf course fund before. It was decided to institute the change incrementally, instead of going straight from eight percent back then in two thousand seventeen, we thought, well, let's go, we'll do, we did six percent in two thousand eighteen, seven percent in two thousand nineteen, and in this two thousand twenty budget, we're doing, we've done eight percent. We decided not to go back retroactively to recapture any loss, due that we were, seemed like we were very low before. The administrative charge to the enterprise funds was reviewed by the Budget Advisory Committee in two thousand seventeen, and we went over this presentation with the Budget Advisory Committee just a couple of weeks ago. I performed my analysis again just a couple of weeks ago with the same methodology I used back in two thousand seventeen, and my results were water and sewer fund came up pretty close, eight point zero two percent. Sanitation fund came in a little higher at ten point four four. Stormwater fund came in at ten point six five, and golf course fund came in, came in at nine point eight percent. I also re-surveyed cities locally, Dunedin is still currently at eight percent, Osmar, ten percent, Largo, nine percent, and Clearwater is at ten point one four percent. Just going back, all admin charges to the enterprise funds is approved as part of the budget process. The admin charges are also incorporated in the water and sewer rate study performed annually, which establishes the water and sewer rates. Our auditors also validated our admin charges methodology and percentage, and that's my presentation that was presented, and the work that was done, and coming up with that.
Okay, can you clarify, then, you said the employees are not paid out of the funds, or paid out of the general fund?
All the employees are paid out of the general fund, and they're not charged to the, that do the admin management work are not charged to the water and sewer fund directly.
Okay. So, but like I'm seeing Public Works Executive Assistant, there's sanitation, stormwater, Public Works Director, sanitation, stormwater, GIS, stormwater. These are different funds that are paying project administration, water sewer fund, stormwater fund, or these are positions, project supervisor, water sewer fund, stormwater, project inspector, water sewer fund, stormwater. These are positions that are funded out of these enterprise funds, based on what personnel breakout is on page forty-seven through forty-nine. So I just wanna make sure I understand, I'm under, like seeing this correctly. Understanding your presentation, the employees are paid out of the general fund, but then when I'm looking at the backup here, it says the split allocations are through these funds as well. So I feel like there's some type of contradictory that I'm missing here.
Well, you've got, you've got other employees, that, that, those are not the employees that are in the general fund. Those are employees that are charged directly to the water and sewer fund for work, I think directly related to water and sewer and the production of the water products and the sewer treatment.
Okay, understood then, thank you for clarifying that. I mean, there's one problem I have from a commissioner's standpoint, like I feel this is additional tax to the residents that's going to the general fund, that's not being approved from a village standpoint. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, I had them pulled up at one point, but it was of like, I mean, if I remember, it was like three or four hundred thousand dollars increase over the past couple of years to where we're at today in fiscal year twenty twenty. So I was just had some concerns, saying, I just wanna make sure it's full transparency that there's charges coming out of this, so we increased the water rate, the sewer rate, and the stormwater rate, but then we're pulling funds out of those funds that were increased the rates for their services and putting it into the general fund, which typically we see from taxes, from ad valorem taxes, revenue in, for permitting, et cetera. So it was just a red flag to me where I saw how large of an increase it is. What I'm encouraged by, though, is that the other cities and municipalities and the surveys that you've done, we align with that. Is it creative accounting? I would say absolutely. It's creative accounting and how you use this. But since we align with the other cities, I think it's important that we're aligning, that we're not going too far above and taking advantage of these other funds. Again, it could fall into taking loans from other funds, too, I'm in support of that still, to avoid debt costs and interest that you have to pay on that, so thanks for clarifying that for me, and I think that makes sense.
Is this a question regarding the administrative fees, or is this stormwater?
Something to do with, anything with the water and sewer?
Anything, okay. I had a quick question on it, thank you Commissioner Carr for bringing that up, I think you made some really good points. That certainly seems like creative accounting, but again, if all the other cities are in line with it, it seems like just the way of the game. And I just had a quick question on page ninety-two in your executive summary, again, this, this should be a pretty easy answer for you. For our stormwater department, under operating supplies, is that going up by over twelve thousand just because we're doing more projects, or we expanded the operation? Or are we just using newer products? How, how are those operating supplies increasing so steadily each year?
We're doing the stormwater fund here?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're, you're just trying to figure out what that increase is there in the stormwater?
Yeah, I thought, weren't we just on stormwater or sewer?
So what, the administration charges, they actually impact sanitation, water, sewer, and stormwater, so there's, it impacts multiple-
Actually, it's all the enterprise fund.
Except the marina and the golf course. I think that's where the confusion is.
Okay, so where am I right now?
Water and sewer.
Are you on ninety-two, Ron? You see ninety-two, line fifty-two.
I'm sorry?
Line fifty-two on page ninety-two.
That's what I said, but if we're not on stormwater, I can wait.
Well, we might as well, we, we're all-
We had, there was some money budgeted for bank stabilization.
Okay. Was it budgeted?
That's an extra project, that, that's what he kinda asked, and that, the increase, what is that for? Extra projects, or, that's the question he's got, and what was the answer to?
It's for some bank stabilization they budgeted for.
What is that? You know, like retention? I was thinking like a bank, like a, like an institution.
Not the bank in New York or anything like that, no. It's for areas where, like, areas we have washouts alongside of the, the hard banks. As we add stormwater, we have to add more funds to maintain it.
Okay, I thought bank stabilization, too, thank you.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions on water and sewer.
Sure.
Let's see. On page two twenty-eight of the binder, affluent sales, I'm, I'm assuming that means reclaimed water sales, Paul? Okay, so in our recent discussions as the BOC, we've- Okay, so in our recent discussions as the BOC, we've determined that our, we're basically at capacity in terms of the amount of reclaimed water that we can sell. So my question is, if we're selling as much as we can sell and our rates are at basically an all time high, how are we going down from four hundred and seven, four hundred and seven thousand dollars in sales to three hundred and ninety five dollars in sales? Three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in sales. The line, uh, I guess three forty three sixty one dash oh three affluent sales on page two twenty eight of the binder.
The reclaimed, you know, on, you look, you notice on all the water and sewer and it basically, like I say, I said earlier, I'm being a little conservative, but I'm seeing the use of water has declined this year. I'm hoping that'll pick back up. So I, I reduce some of my revenue projections there.
I thought we were using more reclaimed water than ever now.
It, it's down this year. I, I've seen, uh, my numbers so far through June, we've been down about four percent between water use and reclaimed use. I think with all the rain we've been having off and on.
Okay, uh, and then if you go further down that page of two twenty eight under miscellaneous, uh, the actuals for two thousand eighteen, you have a lot of miscellaneous numbers that I guess accumulate to a hundred and forty three thousand dollars of capital or revenues. I guess you did some kind of restructuring regarding the interest on investments to get rid of all the little stuff and get one big return, which is the two hundred thousand dollars?
Well, when we budget the interest, I just put it in that one line item at top there, but really we've got interest that comes in from, I'm not sure what I'll be investing in. So there's my interest revenues from CDs, from the federal.
That's what it says for the actuals of two thousand eighteen.
Those are the actuals from two thousand eighteen.
So those are still in place. You just don't know what they are yet.
Correct, and someone I budget for next year, I'm not sure where.
Either case, you're budgeting, you're saying that we're going to make significantly almost twice as much money this year on investments than we did last year.
Like I say, that's when I was budgeting in December, we were getting over three percent. I don't know if, I might cut it back a little or see.
I'm pleased by it. Don't get me wrong. I mean, it's a trend across the board. It seems like in your investments, you're, you're budgeting that we're going to have more money this year than we did in years past, which is a good thing. But it just is, you know, it stays out here because it just shows one line item versus, you know, ten or fifteen, which equate to a sum of numbers.
I, I could try to estimate and, and put the budget all the way down those line items, but I, so far the practice has just been to keep it up on that one line item. And then as the year goes through on the actuals, you'll see it spread out like you see there.
Makes sense. And then on our, our debt service is ten percent. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that. It's two million dollars in debt service and I guess most of that is in relation to the reverse osmosis plant? Yeah?
Yeah, that's all the debt service on the water plant.
Okay.
I'm good.
Any more questions on the water and sewer?
I just had one more comment about backflow charges and I know I've talked to Paul Smith about this in the past. I would feel that like once it's recaptured, the backflow charge, the city doesn't charge for the backflow itself, but just a monthly fee. And once it's recouped, that you shouldn't be charged further in that aspect. And again, I think this falls in the whole water sewer fee structure, if I recall correctly. Can you touch on that one more time? I've had some other residents bring that up to me recently.
Yeah, there's a monthly fee for backflow preventers, usually installed on the water meter side of the system. And that's a protection for all of us as water customers. It keeps things from flowing back into the water main. It's required by law, but it's something that, um, it isn't where you can just put one in and then forget about it. They need to be replaced. They need to be maintained. They need to be tested. So it really is an ongoing expense for us. We have compared it with the market a few times just to see what a plumber would charge to do a similar type thing. We feel like our charges are in line with that part of the sector. So it's important, it's an important source of funding for us to continue to keep that part of the system up.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next is Marina. Look in the, the numbers of the enterprise fund, seems like they're burying it. Mr. Licoris and Mr. Harry, is that possible that, is it possibility that we might rent it out? Or we, have we done that in the past? Have we looked at it?
What was your comment, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Renting out of the Marina?
How about our slip charge?
Well, no, no, the whole thing is, uh, is, is business, renting it out like, like it is. I don't know if it makes any financial sense. Have we looked at it and see if, if that's possible?
How about our rate?
No, no, just rent the whole thing out.
Oh, okay. Like everything to a third party or have someone else run the Marina?
Because it, right now, it's not making any money. We just put money into it.
Just breaking even basically.
I don't know. Is it worth it doing it? Maybe we need to look at it and see.
I don't know if we've looked at that before. We, we can, we can come back on the, come back on the twelve.
I don't know that, I mean personally, I, I think our Marina is, it's such a size that I don't think it makes a lot of sense to operate as a third party. Especially now that we've just, we're going to have a brand new facility, right? So are we in favor of just turning over a brand new facility to a third party operator? I mean, but I would be in favor of mayor is looking at it more so from a business perspective as a city and saying, hey, are, are, are our slip rates in line? Or could we charge more for our slips? Or, you know, are, are, are we renting our, or be more selective in our slips, right? Like a number of years ago, it seemed like the slips went to just boats that weren't necessarily contributing anything to, you know, bringing foot traffic to the, to the dock. Or, you know, having businesses or having boats that actually operated as a business and they were more so just, you know, people looking for a relatively cheap, uh, place to keep their boat. But, you know, going back twenty years, you know, that was like charter row, which is something that we've talked about trying to recreate with, you know, fishermen who have boats who bring customers to the sponge docks, to get customers from the sponge docks and it's more so an actual like going back to the working port thing. So I mean, uh, I don't know, that's something that I would look at as we discuss the Marina as far as like our, are our slip rates in line? Or are we, you know, are we missing the boat and missing additional revenues that we could potentially get, especially given now that we're going to have a brand new facility? You know what I mean?
I think, you know, Tom and I were talking about what, since it's being redone and stuff and, and increasing those slip fees on, at the Marina there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we, we do, I'm sorry, I had an alarm I had to turn off. Yeah, we're doing a, a survey right now on, on the slip rentals and we'll be coming back to you very shortly on, on a proposal and, and look at those and possibly them increasing them.
I'm trying to remember, there hadn't been a talk about, you know, a private or a third party in the Marina for a while, except I think we had one case where I think with the Papa Cell or something, they was asking us a consideration of doing something with whoever was going to buy the property. Do you remember if we've had any of those discussions?
I remember, there's been probably quite a few years since that happened over here, uh, probably a good five or six years, but there was talk about someone taking over the old Paps, right? And leasing that piece of property.
And they were, they were asking about the ability to do that with the Marina. I think that's the only time it's come up in the past.
I mean, it, it's nice to have it, but I mean, it keeps losing money. Right now, we don't, you know, we, we don't charge any operating fee at all and we just barely break even. I don't know, how much money do we invest in now to reconstruction the?
Yeah, about half a little more, yeah.
But if that half million dollars has a, a brand new looking facility over the course of, you know, fifteen years or ten years, I mean, depreciated over that, that timeframe. It's not that big of a deal. I mean, it's something that had been needed to be done for a long time. But I do think that, you know, for sure, we need to have a survey done on our rates, given that we're going to have a brand new facility. And then also, uh, keeping in mind, you know, what we talked about is, I mean, and this is just my opinion, it's up to the will, you know, the will of the board. But I mean, I think that it's very important to have, you know, there's only X amount of slips, right? What is it, twenty, twenty slips?
Actually, with the new configuration, it'd be nineteen.
Nineteen, okay. And then X amount are transient, right? Which is very important in itself.
Transient is probably the best, the best revenue we have coming in on it.
The transient is, and it's a good thing because it brings new people and et cetera. But I think it's important for us to, being that we only have nineteen slips, to, you know, manage it in such a way to where the, the slips that are, let's say, full time, you know, people are slips that add value to the sponge docks in the community as a whole, not just somebody looking for cheap, cheap rent. And then also make sure that we have, you know, uh, our transient slips make sense as far as how many we have and how often somebody can stay and, you know, yada, yada. So I think now that we have a brand new facility and something that we can command a higher price for, it makes sense to go back and look at, you know, all things considered as it relates to generating revenue from the Marina.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Vice Mayor, you guys have some great ideas with the Marina. Uh, I know last budget season I brought this up to Mayor that if we're losing money and then we just invested a significant amount of money, which Vice Mayor reminded us about. I, I mean, I'm not against looking at leasing out the property if there's a business that's interested in it. I mean, uh, like I said before, I'm open to evaluate anything, um, but I believe the Vice Mayor is on to something here. Uh, and I think this is a good opportunity also for Karen, our economic developer, to focus on as well as, as part of it is really focusing on the growth of the charter business within Tarpon Springs, because it's an avenue that we have a few charters currently that are there today. But it's an avenue that we haven't really touched, I don't think, as a whole for the city. When you go to Clearwater, some of these other destinations, uh, I mean, there's plenty of fishing off the coast of, uh, the Tarpon Springs and people want to do stuff when they come to Tarpon Springs. And if we had more charter boats here, it gives the people that visit more things to do, right? And then we're keeping them in Tarpon Springs longer. Hopefully they're staying in our hotels or bed and breakfasts or whatever may be, uh, and that's the idea. So it's also an economic development or an opportunity to increase more foot traffic in the docks, hopefully more stays within Tarpon Springs and more money in our restaurants. So I would completely be in favor with what Vice Mayor was talking about with saying, you require it only commercial vessels of some sort could be leasing it and also day rentals instead of just someone that would be putting their boat there instead of putting in a dry dock or somewhere else. But again, I'm, I'm open to looking at something if there's an opportunity to lease it out somehow, uh, I'm open to evaluate that as well. But I think it's important to, to have charters there and to grow that charter, recruit somehow, we, how we can do that to recruit as well, um, more charters in the area. And also work with that, maybe that goes as part of our advertising, uh, for this year is, um, the ability to go take charters out to catch grouper or whatever may be. I mean, that can be a, a way to promote Tarpon Springs as well.
Yeah, let's look at all these options there, including that could be an incentive for the Papa's Restaurant to be developed here, having that we have the facility there. So let's look at all that and see, uh, if you have Ms. Lewis to look and see what else we got.
We got a team that'll look at it because it encompasses several different departments, so.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just, I know, I should, I should be in the attorney's seat. I just had a, a quick question just to clarify. So are we saying that for the Marina, we want to look into possibly making it only charter boats that would go in there or?
Just a certain amount, like, I mean, my, my thinking would be, uh, you know, they got, the people who have the front, the slips that front directly on like go deck and east. And there's the parking lot there, but like, you know, years ago, there was, that was like charter row, people hanging their fish up there. I mean, it was an attraction, you know? I mean, you go to many, you know, you go to Key West and you see people looking at the charter captains throwing their, you know, fish heads and it's just part of the experience. So I mean, to me, I would rather have that activity there than, like I said, somebody looking for, you know, relatively inexpensive place to keep their boats who adds, adds no value to, you know, what we're trying to do in the sponge dock.
Okay, yeah, I'd be, I'd be more than willing to look into that as long as we had clear cut criteria, like, you know, only these spaces or only this amount or something like that.
Yeah, and also you have to be a licensed captain and you have to generate, just like we do with the city dock in front of the sponge exchange, right? You have to prove that you are a sponger. So with X amount of spaces at the city Marina, you got to prove that you're a charter captain. You got to run X amount of trips a year or, you know, I mean, the criteria that we could set on it is endless. I mean, that would be my desire.
Now we're moving to, uh, stormwater. Well, stormwater to me is directly related with the seawater rise and I'm glad that we're able to budget two million dollars or one hundred and thirty two percent. With that, we'd be able to fin, to work so many different projects. And also we've got a big grant on the project to Penn Street and Groves Avenue. How much we're going to give from that? One point five, one point three million?
Almost million four.
Yeah, million four or something, one, one point three six somewhere.
One point three? And the Toro is going to cost three point two, so that's, it's a very good project. Should be able to do the, the sea breeze sewer lines, something that we've been waiting for a long time in sensitive area. And also they're going, we're going to do the sponge docks in January for Seawall, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think this is a, a very good, uh, very good account, very good, uh, enterprise fund. Vice Mayor, you got any comments on that?
Uh, no, I mean, the, uh, you know, stormwater, stormwater projects over the course of the last five years are something that I think we can be proud of. I mean, you know, just, just to name a few where we used to have flooded cars like on the regular that we don't, you know, we no longer have. I think that we've been making some leaps and bounds and in a lot of cases, they're not easy projects. I mean, there's, you know, there's, uh, to do them, in some cases we have to acquire land, you know, and it's got to be planned out. You can see that a three million dollar project, we've got half of that funded through a grant. So I'm pleased with what we're doing in stormwater and I look forward to the improvements that you've mentioned as, as it relates to backflow prevention and not just in the sponge docks, but in other areas of town as well.
Well, they finished two already, as you know, one on the Bay Shore and another one on Canal that you were talking about, remember that?
Yeah, well, there's, we also talked about the.
And it's working well, right, Tom?
They're both working well. Okay, and Roosevelt.
I mean, there's, we, you know, just because we're doing good, doesn't mean that we don't need to continue to do good. I mean, there's other areas that we got to look forward to because in some cases it takes years to have these projects come to fruition. But I'm good with stormwater.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. Uh, can someone refresh my memory about the increase of fifty cents per ESU per year and remind me also what ESU represents? Tom, you want to share?
He gave me the honors. It's, it's equivalent stormwater unit. It's, it was approved in, after we did a stormwater rate study, I think, three or four years ago. The rates are good through, approved through two thousand twenty five of fifty cent increases per year to cover, uh, stormwater projects like this. It brings in about another hundred thousand a year in revenue increases. Single family home, they'll pay, they're, they're paying seven sixty five right now. Next year they'll pay eight fifteen. So I'm not sure if that helps you any of it.
Okay, um, I'll, I'm going to follow up with Paul a little bit more about the ESU and how it's calculated. I just, that was before, I think I was on the board, so it was, I didn't recall what that was.
Well, they came back, I think when they did it, they did on the stormwater, the area of the stormwater, and I think it's based on, like, this, what's up fronting the, uh, this, the roadway there. And I think it's based on, I can't remember if it was like nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and fifty, uh, square feet of linear frontage there. Maybe Paul might know more.
I don't even remember this stuff, Ron.
I'm struggling there, Paul. I might be close.
I've been out of the stormwater game for about, well, more than five years, but yes, back in two thousand and one, that was one of my first big projects was to do this study. And it's still carrying forward today, but the ESU, as Ron said, equivalent stormwater unit, it's a measure of impervious area. It's the area that the rainwater can't soak into. So there's a standardized unit that's, they evaluate the average across the city. I think it was in that nineteen hundred square foot range. So then, um, what, we voted on it with the public and, and it all worked out that they wanted to keep it simple. Any residential unit, no matter how big or small the house, will be counted as one ESU. But when you get into the commercial properties, then you start calculating it and dividing by that standard number and coming up with how many ESUs is that? And then multiply that times that rate.
Okay, great. Thanks. Uh, Ron, if you could connect or touch base to, since it's been discussed a couple of times, the city's going to be receiving around one point four million dollars in a grant. When that's received, how long is that before it's actually used? Can we invest that in a short term CD and make some more money on it?
No, that's going to the project that's already, uh, that's the Penn project.
It's part of the Penn gross project. It's three point two million.
But once we receive it or the city receives it.
So they've already spent the money, so it'll reimburse, reimburse.
Okay, so it's a reimbursement grant then, okay. Got it.
If we had it in the over, and how much money could it generate before we spend it?
Right, yeah, okay. No further questions, thanks.
Commissioner Donovan?
No questions.
No question. Okay, next one is golf course. Another, uh, enterprise fund that, uh, we, actually we spent a lot of money trying to bring it up and, and it's nice, we get a lot of compliments now, but we need to find a way. but we need to find a way to increase the revenue, Mr. Licorice. Uh, I don't know, by, uh, improving the, the restaurant, though, you think they'll create more revenue, or something we should consider?
Yeah, liquor license.
Yeah?
We can look at that.
Yeah.
I know we've talked about it some times before, but we can, we can look at that, I don't know. I don't know what that would be, or how long we'd start seeing the profits from what we put into it, but that's something we can look at.
Yeah, yeah, because, uh, um, increasing the restaurant business, but other things evolve too.
Mayor, can I ask a question? What about, um, leasing out, like, the rights for, like, a food truck, every Saturday, a different type of food truck, and you get a percentage of the food sales? So, um, you lose the overhead of the kitchen itself, but you've got the food truck in a certain area where the golfers can buy something, and then it's a shared revenue source somehow, could be an alternative for revenue.
Also, we have a very good restaurant that we don't use, you know, we had the, uh, some of the meetings there.
Uh huh.
You know?
Does the rest, does the, uh, Penn Hall have a full kitchen?
Yeah, I think it does.
No, we have a very limited facility, um,
We got Paul's route here.
We met there one time, we had a hot dog.
Vice Mayor was there and stuff, he had a, a microwave hot hamburger, but you gotta admit, it was a delicious hamburger.
It's not a bad hamburger.
He said it wasn't bad for what it was, but I think it was a microwave hamburger, I bel, I believe.
Got a pretty good bar, too.
Yeah, the bar.
Beer and wine.
Beer's cool.
Um, I will say Howard Hunt, our, our golf course manager, has experience in his prior, uh, work, working at a facility. It had a restaurant, a country club environment, and his experience was, that part of the business was the biggest struggle to make it meet its expenses. And we're seeing even on a smaller scale at our golf course, the staffing challenges we're having to get people to wanna come do that kinda job, uh, to the point that we've got a vacancy that we still haven't filled. So even on a small scale of selling drinks and sandwiches, um, you know, so to get into the restaurant business at the golf course, um, would be quite, uh, something to overcome. I would say, I know there's a lot of nostalgia with, uh, the golf course back when the restaurant was in full swing. I do think we had a different environment then, there's a lot of restaurant competition now that I don't think was there back then. I will say, though, that talking to Howard, the golf course manager, he is open to, uh, suggesting we look at, if we do bring this food service thing up some more, doing a contract type of approach. Uh, and he's coming at it more from his experience with trying to hire the help, and, um, that sort of thing, and not really seeing a big margin, um, by the time he subtracts the expenses out.
And, and I don't know if it's worth looking at if you, uh, rent the place for meetings and stuff like that, different group.
Um, I would say that as a, you know, I mean, it's obviously, the restaurant business is a hard, you know, hard business with a big failure rate. But in terms of leasing the facility, if we did have a kitchen, now, we don't really have a kitchen, so there's not much other than what's there to lease, right? But I mean, in terms of leasing a facility, that's something that I would be interested in, and do a cost, and do a profit share, like what you're talking about with the food truck, but only, you know, utilize the facility to lease it, right? Not the golf course itself, we're still gonna operate that, but just the restaurant, that's something that I would be interested in. Um, and then my only question regarding the golf courses, in the, in the budget, I don't see any, uh, any government of transfer, so I'm assuming that a number of years ago, the big renovation that we did, we've already paid our, we've fully paid ourselves back now for that?
No, we haven't, um, the golf course has basically had to take loans for all the improvements. And if I could just go back quickly, Ron referenced back when we leased the golf course. During that period of time, there was no investment in the golf course. So when we took it back, um, we had to build a new cart barn, a new maintenance building, upgrade the clubhouse some, to some degree, and then, of course, all of the grounds, we redid the greens. So we've accumulated a lot of costs, and those are all loans. We've been paying back those loans with a surcharge on the greens fees, that brings in about forty thousand a year. But, um, that's taken a long time to pay back this nine hundred thousand or something that's outstanding. I really appreciate Ron looking at that transfer, because, um, that will allow us to, I think, make some headway on that debt. And, um, I will say this, relatively, most municipal courses are relying on their general funds. They're almost like a recreation division, where they, they have to contribute to keep the golf course afloat, that's very common. So for us, we actually do meet our expenses, year in and year out, for the most part, very close to breaking even, or even a little bit ahead. Um, so I think we're doing very well comparatively, and I do understand that you wanna clear the debt, possibly come in above board a little bit if we can. And that's something that we are working on.
So are we not servicing the debt this year?
I'm sorry?
Are we not servicing any golf course debt this year to the general fund?
We have a loan with the sanitation fund, and I'm not sure what the balance is, but we're on track to pay that. I think it's about forty thousand a year, right, Ron, thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct, it's about forty thousand a year, the balance at the end of this year will be about a hundred and sixty thousand.
That's what we owe?
That's a, I'm sorry.
That's what the golf course will still owe from that renovation from years ago, is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah, that was a loan that was taken, inter, inter-fund loan that was done a few years ago.
So that's the total golf course debt to the general fund?
To the sanitation fund, yeah.
That's not too bad, cause it was like a million four or something for the renovation, wasn't it?
Well, there's, it, they're still in a negative cash position, uh, over and above that, in the amount of about nine hundred and eighty-two thousand.
And who is that, what fund does that money owed to?
That is just, that's just a negative cash balance sitting in the golf course fund, there hasn't been a loan done for that.
So, yeah, can you explain that? You just have, on paper, there's, there's a negative balance of nine hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And that was from that renovation years ago?
That's from all the capital expenses that have been done over the years in the golf course, and charged to the golf course fund.
But we paid for that out of an account, correct? Not the golf course fund, or we loaned the golf course money for that?
Well, they loaned part of it when they did the loan from the sanitation fund, but the other part is just, um, the, the negative cash. At the end of the year, the auditors require us to get rid of that negative balance, and we've been using the general fund, so you'll see a net, we'll see the net nine hundred thousand coming out of the cash in the general fund when we do the year-end audit book, if that.
The nine hundred is owed to the general fund, then?
Basically, at the end of the year, when we do our accounting entry, yes, we get rid of that negative, and it's not done, as, we haven't done an official inter-fund loan, but at the end of the year, for financial purposes, we clear out that negative nine hundred thousand by taking that out of the general fund. Did that help you?
Yeah, to a degree.
Is that annually, or how does that, I mean, can't we just write that off the books and then clear it, or is that?
I saw that thumb. I saw that thumb.
Is that for me or Paul?
I gave the thumbs up, but he's talking about, can you just clear them, since we did all those renovations when we took over the course, and it was a disaster, from what we ran it out, how can, can we write off those?
I think the intent was, you know, maybe we'd be able to recoup it with the revenues and the fees, and that's why, you know, we've been trying to decrease that inter-fund transfer, which used to be at two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so hopefully if we get rid of this, you know, the current transfer, which is, this is the first year, we might have more revenues that we can reduce that nine hundred thousand that's sitting out there.
This is year over year, it's like an accounting situation, it's not actual true dollars, though, right?
Well, it's an actual, I mean, right now, there's actually nine hundred, hundred thousand negative cash balance in the golf course fund.
But it's not really coming out, I know what he's saying, he said, it's not actually nine hundred thousand's coming out of the fund, it's,
Yes.
We're not take, we're not allocating nine hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund this year to the golf course, right?
Correct.
Okay, I wanna talk about this further, just one-on-one.
That's why I do a lot of accounting things.
But it's still money owed to the general fund, at a certain point.
Yeah.
Right.
If it starts ma, golf course starts making money, that m, money that made would go back to lower that.
Right.
So this is years over year, like, twenty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, a hundred thousand, year over year, that was negative, that pulled money out of the general funds, it just hasn't repaid it back, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, most of it was from the renovations, correct?
It's from the capital, uh, projects that were done, uh, I know one of them was, like, when they redid the greens, uh, three or four years ago, and I think there was some major capital, uh, years before that, I can't remember what it was, but that's what created the negative cash balance.
Okay. Great, thank you for that information.
I think Ron's been running an M Scott on me, too, though, I think he's got a twenty-one percent interest rate.
Um, I, again, I wanna connect with you two at some point about that further. Um, it's, it's just so I understand, today, though, the golf course seems to be breaking even, the way I'm looking at this. And I, am I looking at it correctly, the Marina and the golf course are like, revenue versus expenses are almost exactly, right?
Well, when I checked the audit book, usually, operating-wise, for the golf course, operating revenues, operating expenses, like golf course is twen, a positive twenty-six thousand in last year's audit book. So usually golf course, yes, will have a twenty, thirty thousand dollar, an operating income.
Okay.
And then usually, the inter-fund, that, I don't wanna complicate things more, but then the, the admin charge, uh, usually fell after that, and that's what brought them into a decrease for the fund. But operating-wise, they've been a positive twenty, thirty thousand.
Okay, that's good to know, I mean, I guess you could look at an opportunity cost, say, what happens if the city were to sell part of the golf course? You have tax, uh, property taxes at that point, you're bringing in, you don't have expenditures going into the golf course for investments. Uh, there's other avenues to look at it from an opportunity cost standpoint. Uh, I've been looking at it as a unique opportunity for the city of Tarpon Springs, it's a demographic that you don't necessarily, it, it may be a group of individuals that visit Tarpon Springs specifically for the golf course, and then, um, the spouse may drop off the husband, or the husband may drop off the wife, it could be either way, um, to go play golf for the day, and then they go into town to have lunch, go shopping, go to the sponge dock, or something along those lines. So it's a unique economic driver as well for the city, uh, that people may not, that may be the only thing they know about Tarpon Springs. I think that's one of the things I've pushed so hard for, the updated entrance area with signage, walls. Also looking at some, um, old pictures of Tarpon Springs that go on the outside of the, um, club, or, what do you call it when you go, to go pay? What's that called, that place?
Pro shop.
Pro shop, thank you. Um, the, the spruce setup, and it doesn't cost very much to do that, might be a couple thousand dollars, but just get some old pictures of the bayous, put them on a canvas, stretch them out, um, do something a little more creative to show the history of Tarpon Springs, put a historic sign there, I know that's gonna be coming up in another commission meeting, um, as well. But, uh, this, the, the golf course is what a lot of people in Pinellas County and Tampa Bay area know of Tarpon Springs, and then it's just another area that makes Tarpon Springs unique. Um, is it always the best idea to keep a, a public golf course? Probably not later on the fut, or maybe not later on in the future, but today, I mean, it's, it's interesting to see that it's breaking even. Um, and then also the Marina is breaking even right now, too, so I don't have any further comments, thanks.
Also creates, provides recreation to some, a lot of people, too.
Absolutely.
Part of being a full-service community.
Yeah.
Thank you, if I may add, too, we're also hosting two high school golf teams at our facility, both Tarpon Springs and Palm Harbor. So, uh, there's a lot of benefits besides just the income.
Yeah.
Commission Donovan?
Uh, yeah, I think our municipal golf course is actually in really good shape, I mean, all things considered, it's breaking even, it's a pretty nice-looking course. Of course, I'd, I'd, you know, be in favor of beautifying it some more if we're able to, but we also have to temper our expectations, knowing that it's a municipal course, and we're maybe comparing it in our minds to the, you know, Cypress Runs, Crescent Oaks, uh, a lot of the privately, or at least semi-private, um, country clubs you got going on in Eastlake. Um, but I'm, I'm really satisfied with the way our, our golf course is operating and looking lately. Um, but again, yeah, if we can do anything to make it, uh, more creative, then I'd be helpful.
Create a little bit more revenue would be even better. Okay, what's next? Uh, internal services, we get anything? If not, that's all we have, any other questions coming? Well, that concludes the budget section, and it's adjourned at nine fifty-two PM. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
Good night.
The rain stopped, so it's a good.
That was relatively.
Did you hear the thunder?